February third.
Ready?
We are.
Let's see, I'm looking for our video, is Jake on?
Yep, yes, I'm here.
All right, let's call this special budget session number two. Great County Boards of Budgets to Order, Mr. Grandy, roll call.
All right, Keesha Johnner?
Here.
Mark Ramey?
Here.
Steve McCombs?
Here.
Very good, today's agenda is again a continuation of our budget review sessions. As we establish FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve today's agenda.
Second.
All right, McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good, well, continuing that vein, we have our county engineer Tyler Christian here to talk about road department, Tyler, take it away.
Thank you, so I guess I'll jump right into revenues. In our general budget meetings out last week, we talked about revenues a little bit and kind of the trend since COVID hit in March, and we took some extra precautions at the end of the last fiscal year, which we'll talk about regarding fund balance, but overall, the picture still remains about the same as we have been the last couple of years with road use tax slightly increasing and, you know, maybe a half a percent to a percent per year. And then the property tax being in that two to five range, we typically budget around three percent. So the the net change there is about two percent increase in total revenue from twenty-one to twenty-two. And just for informational purposes, I have the five-year average of six point eight million dollars in revenue. That is not sustainable if you look at the inflation we have in some material price increases.
What'd you say, what word did you use?
Sustainable.
The I-word?
Inflation.
Inflation, I'm sorry, I was gonna, I heard from the Senate last night, there's no inflation.
Well, as far as materials, we've seen quite.
How much?
Inflation, around seven percent right now. However, we had a bid letting in December and all for a bridge and also two here last week, or two weeks ago, all coming in really good, I mean fifteen percent under almost identical project project from the year prior, so construction as a whole has come in really good.
Okay.
But oil prices are still low, you know, so that plays a huge factor in the trucking industry.
So we haven't seen the impacts yet.
No, and and everybody contracted a ton, a ton of fuel, just like we did.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Good.
So construction as a whole is looking really good. So this year, Tammy, I had Tammy take a look at the summary of annual reports, so this is all ninety-nine counties' annual reports, so we could kind of have some comparisons throughout. So many factors go into comparing counties, you know, population is one metric, you guys said that last week. Miles of road is another metric. You know, population-wise, we're one of a twenty-second percentile.
Right.
Based on population, but as far as road miles and square miles a county, now square miles a county, we're really average. But Lake Red Rock takes a lot of our road miles away. And we also have, you know, a lot of counties have a north-south and an east-west state highway. We have two north-souls and two east-west with one sixty-three, ninety-two, five, fourteen. So that takes some road miles away from secondary roads, also not, not complaining about that, but it definitely has an impact on how you can compare counties. You know, other counties our size have one hundred fifty, two hundred more miles of gravel roads. Without Lake Red Rock and the river and everything contributed to the red lake, so. So just by comparison, our average is one point two percent. That seven point two million is one point two percent above the state average for county revenue. And then I did look at that twenty-second percentile metric, just because that's kind of, you know, one that we kind of normalize salaries around things like that as well. And so we're thirteen percent under the five counties nearest to that twenty-second percentile. So I had Tammy average the five nearest to our population.
Any way to, Tyler, I mean, you said we got, we got less miles of county road than those counties do because of the lake, et cetera, is it roughly thirteen percent less on average?
Yes.
Because if we're thirteen percent under and.
So.
Is it thirteen percent, are you talking cost or miles?
Miles.
Yeah, you're talking miles on that one.
We're, yeah, so we're about.
All right, so I misunderstood.
So we're about, to answer your question, we are, we have twenty-three percent fewer bridges than the twenty-second percentile, five counties nearest the twenty-second percentile.
Okay.
And we have about fourteen percent fewer road miles in total.
Okay.
Where where we make up the difference a little bit is in pavements and steel coats. We have many more miles of steel coats than than other counties, and that's attributed to our number of subdivisions that we have. And you know, a lot of our subdivisions, and there's two miles of steel coat in a town, in a small town like Pershing or Tracy or Park Hills, and there's quite a bit of miles that add up quickly, I guess. So moving on to the expense side, staying pretty normal here around that eight million dollar mark. As far as overall expense, not a balanced budget, you know, I'm playing the fun balance game. You know, Jake mentioned that last week, you know, I I keep a good handle on that. Every month in report I get, I'm double checking where we're at. And so we're always playing that fun balance game and kind of dealing with the trends of revenue and expense. That ninety-two percentile that you were talking about and then last week. And then revenues, we're tracking those monthly, real-time, the road use tax and the property tax is pretty well set, you know, we know what that transfer is going to be based on sure budget. But but we're tracking those road use tax allocations monthly to make sure, and then if we have to adjust from there, we will. So the plan decreased from eight point three to eight point two million was based on our fund balance projection, we knew that was coming. We made three motor grader purchases last year, that's a big chunk of that. And and then you can see, Mark, I, to your point, four to seven percent is what we've been seeing as far as material price increases. And that's anything from limestone to steel to concrete.
Okay.
It's always interesting to me, Tyler, and when we look at our other operating, our other county departments, you're one of the few departments where your operating budget eats up more of your total budget than your wages. Salary, I assume, I assume when you say wages, that's wages and healthcare, or is that just wages?
That's strictly wages, because this is Fund Twenty expenses, our wages and our earnings come out of Fund Two.
Fund Two, okay, so you think.
I did not, so that would be about eight hundred thousand, seven ninety-something.
Okay, so you'd add another probably.
So that's.
About three percent?
Yeah.
You might do that, right?
How much did you say it was?
I think it's around seven ninety or eight hundred thousand. How's my guy?
About three.
Seventy, seventy thirty employees, seventy, thirty percent operations.
What's your salary base?
Oh, sorry.
Dollar-wise?
No, no.
Uh, like two point three million?
Six, sorry, I was going, I was down, need to go down. Sixty-two.
Also be higher.
So we're around three million total.
Yeah, so it'd be like.
So it'd almost be like eight, nine percent.
Yeah, yeah.
Addition to that twenty-nine.
To the twenty-nine.
Be around third.
Yeah, that's, that'd be about double, 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 maybe triple what I say.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, sorry, I was up a line, so, yeah, because it's thirty-seven percent right now.
Still, so let's just, let's just say it's, let's say it's nine for the second order. That's thirty, it's thirty-eight. And so still, argument holds, most of your budget's operations, correct? Not people, most, that's, that's just unusual for us, I mean, that's, that's what makes your department very different.
And by comparison, we're in that ninety-one to two percent of the state and the five counties nearest that twenty-second percentile. Regarding the.
And it's not that the others' departments should be that way, because if they're.
No, there's, no.
They do different things.
Because conservation is similar, really, that's equal.
Conservation is similar.
Yep.
Tyler's department, they're builders, fixers, flowers, movers, I mean, they do stuff with this equipment, and so it's going to be.
Yep.
Structured that way, so, just a meaningless observation.
So then, as always, for your information, I just take the wages and distribute them around to to each of those different facets of our department, so before you saw wages separated out and now it, you know, see the bulk of it is in roads. Roads, bridges, not so much, because typically we're hiring a contractor to do major bridge repair or replacement, so.
This has been fairly constant, Tyler, I mean, if we were to look back over the last five years, this would be roughly the same.
Yep, if anything, our admin and engineering costs are coming down, and you'll see that in the next couple of months. And I think we talked about that last year as well. Yeah, if, I mean, here, you can see, admin is going down, we're gonna buy a copier this year. I mean, that, it's, we, we, five years ago, we went away from leasing copiers to purchasing outright. Ours is going to be six years old, we were hoping to get five out of it, that has saved us literally tens of thousands of dollars. I think our total savings come here, fourteen thousand dollars by purchasing outright over a lease that we were in, so. You know, that's one of the reasons you see our numbers going down, is because we're finding ways, and largely due to Andrew and his department, but all, you know, other areas like that, as far as uniform services, janitorial services, all that stuff, we've streamlined and to bring our admin costs down.
Excellent, yeah.
Getting pretty lean there, you know, it's going to get harder.
Yeah.
Because there's not much to our admin, so. At least it's not going.
Sorry, I, like.
So engineering, this is largely variable based on what projects we have going, if we have any large projects where we're doing consultant fees. But the lighter blue dash line is kind of the trend on where we would be without those large consultant fees. But we're looking at replacing some equipment right now, we've been really struggling with our surveying lately. Actually, I think they're in Des Moines right now demoing new equipment for the storm tomorrow, because we've got four major bridge projects and we've been trying to survey them all winter, and our equipment has been a problem. So we're just gonna have to replace it next year. And then soil borings, because we have those larger bridge projects, we're doing soil borings. A lot of times we'll have records from the original bridge, for some reason, we don't own these few, so kind of all built in that same timeframe, so we try to use the old borings from old plans if we can. But, and when I started here, that was like twelve thousand, or twelve hundred dollars per bore. Now we're like thirty-five hundred dollars a bore.
Wow.
In seven years, so you'll get ten thousand dollars for a bridge just to get soil borings, so. So Bridge and Culver, this is the maintenance work that we do, this is not replacement or any, or any major rehabilitation, this is simply a replacement rehabilitation, you see the spike after the fuel tax increase. You know, we, we went heavy on building some bridges ourselves and doing some major repairs like deck, deck boards with our own crews. Guardrail rehab, you know, there's a lot of angle iron guardrail that really wouldn't do anything when a car hits it. We've upgraded some of those. And then we've been doing some deck, deck patching ourselves recently, and we're, this year, we're going to try some deck sealing that's really getting some good reviews from city and county engineers in Iowa to try to preserve our bridges on paved roads because of the salt.
Okay.
Infiltrating cracks and things like that, so it's a hydroscopic material to repel that water and salt from infiltrating. Roads still have that emphasis on sustainability, we've done quite a few more re-grads, we've done quite a few more road stabilization practices to try to make the gravel more, roads more sustainable and with large amounts of success on that. So we are going to continue to invest in that, because it takes an investment upfront, but our long-term savings, you know, these investments are paying themselves off in four to five years, and reduce maintenance costs, reduce the amount of gravel we're putting on the roads, and preserving integrity of the road itself. They're not getting squashed out as fast by the heavy truck traffic and every agricultural equipment that we're seeing these days. So more emphasis on sustainability in twenty-twenty-two, but also on our highway shoulders. We have an employee, kind of, that came from a couple other counties, I kind of asked him, you know, what, what do you see here that you don't see other places, other places are doing better than us or places you've worked? And he said shoulders, we kind of knew that, and so Brian Hatch has been working on a shoulder program similar to how we manage our gravel. And so we're going to put a bigger emphasis on that next year, because we really do need to protect those shoulders. Not only for the safety of the traveling public, you know, if you have an edge rut or something, they can pull a vehicle, but also that helps the edge of your pavement as well. This one, you know, we had a big spike in eighteen nineteen because of the winter we had, but we also lost our rail port in Reynolds, we were having salt delivered by rail, and then they truck it from there. We contract the salt through the central Iowa Salt Group, they had a rail port, let me put it that way. So when they lost the rail port, our price went up about five dollars a ton, which was about a fifteen percent increase at the time. So, so that's unfortunate, BNSF says they do not have any plans to fix that or put it back into service. So it looks like we'll continue to see the higher price per ton with trucking, we don't have any other options as far as rail ports. And it's all based on miles.
Right.
So we are just outside of that bubble, we're in the higher price per ton, so.
Write a letter to Warren.
Traffic controls, we've been holding some money here, you see the spike after the road use tax came in at sixteen to apply for some grants, the timing had never been right, we had other higher priority projects that we were looking at with the grant funding. This year, we went ahead and applied, so we've been holding that money and not actually spending it. And this year, we actually applied for the grant and got it, you'll probably see it here in the next board meeting or two. But last week, we were informed that we received that grant, and so we'll finally expend that fund or those funds, and then that will come back down below a hundred thousand dollars. By comparison here, I, you know, I've always felt like we really did a good job on our signage. We've made some huge improvements, we've completely tackled the retro reflectivity and are up to date on that. There was a mandate, it was supposed to be done in two thousand fourteen, they buy the FHWA and they extended that. We had met all those goals anyway. But I think if you look at Jason County, even the DOT some, we really do a good job on retro reflectivity and quality and even the neatness of our signs as far as, Rich does a really good job on, he's kind of like me, he doesn't like a crooked post or leaning post and that sort of thing, that drives me nuts, and so we got a good guy in a position and he's done a good job, as have some of his predecessors there, so. New equipment, like I said, last year, we purchased three motor graders, we went with a different manufacturer than we ever have.
Wondered how that.
So far, that's going really good, the guys like it, fuel is a little high right now as far as their the amount of fuel that the John Deere's are burning, some of that is probably and likely attributed to the break-in period on a new machine until the cylinders get seeded and all that, they burn more fuel, I don't completely understand it, but. So we're waiting to realize, you know, what the actual cost is there, because that's a huge factor when we burn tens of thousands of gallons a year in these machines, that, you know, we need to know how does that factor into our lifecycle cost, because that could be a big factor, so. What we do know is we went with all-wheel drive John Deere's.
Oh, yeah.
Over a tandem drive Caterpillar, and they were thirty thousand dollars or ten percent cheaper in initial cost.
The John Deere was cheaper than the Caterpillar?
Yeah.
And the Caterpillar was, was it four-wheel drive too, assuming?
No.
They weren't?
No, it was about fifty thousand to go to the all-wheel drive Caterpillar. So these were, all-wheel drives were thirty thousand cheaper than the tandem drive Caterpillar, or fifty thousand cheaper than the all-wheel drive Caterpillar. So if, you know, I ran the numbers and the warranty was a little better too.
Okay.
And.
Where do you have to get those serviced, I mean, it is, that's.
Murphy Tractor in Altoona.
Yep.
And these John Deere graders are actually made in Davenport. The greater, or what'd I say, tractor, these graders are actually made in Davenport, so. They are, they have sticker, big sticker on them says made in Iowa. So so far, the guys like them, I mean, there, there's definitely quirks in, and it's a lot of operator practice and stuff too. But we're gonna, you know, we've got all the data, and we're going to continue to monitor their data, because this is one of the biggest things we do is have a fleet of thirteen machines that are three hundred thousand dollars a piece, so we really want to keep track of whether we're getting out of our investment, what we want to get out of it.
Do you have to rotate, I mean, are you rotating, how often are you buying, I mean, are you buying these three and?
So I was just getting ready to say, we completely overhauled our five, excuse me, our fifteen-year equipment replacement plan. Fifteen years is about the lifecycle of everything that we have.
Okay.
When I got here, we were replacing about one motor grader per year, and we had fifteen when I started, now we only have thirteen machines. And for trucks, I, fifteen-year lifecycle is about all you should get, we've definitely got, we've got some twenty, going on twenty-three-year-old plow trucks right now.
Wow.
But I think that sweet spot is definitely around fifteen years, so that's why we looked at fifteen-year equipment replacement plan. So Mike and I completely overhauled that this year. And in twenty seventeen, I don't know if you were on the board yet, but I made a pitch to you about buying, we bought five Caterpillar motor graders, and we were looking at a buyback program.
Yeah, I was at that.
That buyback program expired, or is, is set to expire here in the next year, year and a half. And what we've realized is we're not quite getting as much money, or our cost of ownership per year, annual cost of ownership, isn't quite as low as we had planned it to be, but we can get there by going to a seven-year, seven thousand hour warranty instead of the five, five-year. So we're, my plan is to purchase that additional warranty right now, and that's in the, in this budget that for FY twenty-two is to extend the warranty on the five that we purchased three or four years ago. And then, like I said, John Deere has the better warranty, and it's a seventy-five hundred hour, seven-year. And so that brings our cost of ownership down to within a couple thousand of what we were doing, have replacing one machine per year. But what we do know is that materials and parts have skyrocketed, so we're still planning on keeping everything under warranty.
Okay.
Which, they, you know, when you compare back to what we were doing, replacing one per year, keeping it for fifteen years, the, the dealers were all telling us, your machines are in exceptionally good shape, you shouldn't be spending that few dollars, you know, that's skid loader price, and for some reason, we weren't seeing that. So they said there's a lot of risk there, because we, for some reason, we weren't seeing it, or our mechanics were doing a really good job or something. So we're eliminating that risk, we're eliminating the inflation of parts and, and, so right now, Keesha, we're planning on replacing every seventy years.
Okay.
Which would put us on about a two-machine-per-year rotation with a couple years skipped every, every five to six years.
What's the, what's the cost of the extra warranty?
Yeah, it's just.
It's about fourteen thousand dollars.
For all machines or each, each machine?
For each machine, yep. It's, it's about.
I found that that's, I mean, I'm assuming, you know, that's, that's what works best.
Sorry, Mark, can I go back to this question?
Yeah, because.
You, you asked me what the cost for the additional warranty?
Yes.
That is a seven-year warranty beyond the original manufacturer warranty. So you're, you're asking what?
So the manufacturer's warranty runs, what, three?
Uh, two-year.
Two-year, and this will go seven beyond that?
Yeah, for powertrain, that's engine, trans, and the, the after treatments, so the death and all diesel exhaust. Yep, burn and.
So that's fourteen for each machine to go for nine years.
Yep, seven.
Seven years.
So you're at five, you're buying five years to. You've got two-year, two-year base, yep, plus five.
Five, so, okay, because I was just gonna ask you, Keesha.
It takes you to seven, total.
Right.
But we have, we've had some drivetrain issues, and we know what the bills would be.
Yeah.
And, I mean, the minimal, you know, a little bearing in the transmission is six grand.
Sure.
Because you've got to tear it a whole bunch apart.
Buy your warranties.
How do we buy them?
And the only reason I ask is that just happens to be the business I'm in, so.
Okay.
Tell me how you do this.
I asked the dealer to give me all the options, and then we buy, well, right now, with the Deere's, we bought them upfront, you know, they had different options as far as.
So you're buying the extended warranty through the dealer?
Through the dealer.
You're not going somewhere else to get that extended?
No.
Okay.
The main, we've asked different man, what different manufacturer, because the manufacturer warranty is the original two-year.
Yep.
And, no, these are through the dealers.
Okay.
So Ziegler and Murphy Tractor.
It's modernized in the country extended award. It's modernized in the country extended warranty phone call.
From Rwanda.
Yeah.
Nigeria.
Which is, which I would say is good, Mark, because Ziegler and Murphy are both in Altoona.
Yeah.
We can go up there or call, or they come down, a lot of times, they come down.
Sure.
I mean, most of the time, they come down.
No, I think it's fine.
And we can have that direct conversation about what's covered, what's not, and they're also really good about when you get in that two-hundred-hour range before or after, we kind of have them come down and say, you know, what are our issues? We had one, they went in and did the transmission work, and it was like five hundred hours out of warranty.
Yeah.
You know, we have a relationship with these people.
Yeah, no, I think it's, that's what I was kind of curious about, Tyler, was this through the dealer, the extended, or was this after, well, call afterward, or you go to someplace else to get the extended? Because those exist, those are out there, you can buy your base from the, from the manufacturer, or it comes with the, with the equipment, and then you can go get your extended. You can buy your base from the, from the manufacturer or it comes with the, with the equipment and then you can go get your extended from especially with heavy equipment. You get it from a lot of places. There are a lot of people out there selling, you know, selling those right now. So that's good.
I mean, it's good. We've had some problems with the Caterpillars and that's why we went with, one of the reasons we went with Deere, not only because of the, the initial cost. Um, but as far as dealing with those folks on warranty issues, Caterpillar, Ziegler has been fantastic. I mean.
Yeah, they have a great reputation.
And they have bent over backwards to fix the problem we were having with, in the computer system too with the transmission shifting. And our guys are very, very thankful of that. When we get into days like tomorrow with drifts.
Right.
We had some major problems going into drifts that transmission would downshift and hesitate and they'd lose all their momentum going into a big drift.
And I don't know if you ever tracked this Tyler, but it would be interesting, at least for me. I don't know the other two, but when you, when you pay fourteen thousand dollars per tractor for extended warranty and you total up your repair costs and what that warranty covers, it would just be interesting, that cost benefit.
Oh, yeah, I have all that.
Yeah, just to kind of know what that, if you looked at what the, what the order pocket would have been without that warranty, so.
That'd be, that would be an interesting, yeah, I agree.
I know we had one repair on that, one, one of the cats where we wiped that completely out, that fourteen thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we had some. We had one just before it went out of warranty. It was usually a twenty-seven thousand dollar million, not more.
Yeah. Yeah, so good. Thank you.
So I think we're sitting in a really good place there. Um as far as motor graders, definitely the most expensive thing we deal with. Uh, for our truck fleet, we've gradually been uh replacing some trucks in our fleet. Some, some of our trucks were used. Uh, and that's got, the used truck market has gone crazy. And so we, we've really found a good niche with uh the Western Star trucks. We may revisit uh the bidding. So three or, three years ago was the last time we bid out trucks. We just decided we were gonna go with Western Star. We've, we've been really happy with them. It was easy to say we want this one again. But just to do our due diligence, I think next year we'll probably look at bidding, looking at different manufacturers and that sort of thing again. Um, to see if there's any potential cost savings there. Some manufacturers that we have had problems with in the past, maybe they've gotten over the hump and, you know, aren't, aren't having those issues anymore, so. We'll take a look. I'm not saying we'll change anything. Uh, but trucks is gonna, still gonna be a struggle. Um, you know, like I said, we've got twenty, twenty-three-year-old dump trucks out there plowing snow right now and um, you know, they may not get replaced for another two or three years. We're gonna do two this year and a few next year, but we have eighteen, so that takes a while to get through the fleet and. Uh, right now, we've, since I've been here, we've replaced five. Um, we have had, the used truck thing is has bit us a few times. You know, it seems like a good deal upfront, but uh you end up investing more money in that two, three years down the road. Um, so as far as uh annual cost of ownership, lifecycle cost analysis, with government discounts, you can't be. So that's how we plan to proceed. Fuel played a big part in our decrease in equipment operations. Um, I think you, you're seeing about sixty or seventy thousand dollar decrease from last year's budget. We actually um decreased our fuel budget by ninety thousand dollars.
Yeah, wow.
Which was like forty percent reduction in our fuel budget over the last year. Mike has contracted fuel out to June of twenty twenty-two. That's as far as they would let us go.
Okay.
And we got some around a dollar and we got some around like a dollar forty and some for a dollar sixty for diesel.
That's great.
Wow.
Most of it, I think it averages out around that dollar forty-seven, dollar fifty range, maybe.
Tyler, when do we start that process? We're, we're through twenty-two. When do we start getting our next contracts in place?
I can contract right now for July of twenty-two.
What's, what's the trend look like now with all these changes in administration?
I have not, I haven't asked Mike since January twentieth. Uh, right before that, we were looking at it, but I have not asked him since, so I honestly, I don't know.
Okay.
Mike gets um contract price every day. They email that to him.
Yeah.
And then um he actually puts that in a spreadsheet and tracks it because then we can see the trends ourselves without going back through email. So he plugs it into a spreadsheet. And what that, we see yearly trends. Um, February fourteenth, Valentine's Day, they always say is the best time to contract fuel. And we've been burning on that a couple of times, but, but if we look back through our spreadsheets, yeah, generally that's a pretty good time. So we'll be taking a look at it.
Do you think it makes any sense, Tyler, with what we know, where gas prices are gonna go? I think everybody has a general sense they're gonna go on. You know, we've got this action on Keystone Pipeline. We know that the, the new administration is less uh, has, has less affinity for fracking and those things. Um, focus on electric and wind and all that. And it's not to be political. I'm just thinking about ways that we can save us money and take advantage of the environment. So if that's directionally where we're going, do we, like for COVID, Steve, we, we filled our tanks. We, we decided we would go ahead and get our tanks filled for other county offices, the Sheriff's Department. I think conservation. I, I can't remember everybody else that we used that.
Well, conservation had their own sheriff's department use that, our.
Yeah, so I, so I, I, and I don't, maybe you don't have an answer for this, but it would be interesting for me. We use the wax card for most of our other offices, Sheriff's Department, et cetera. But they're paying, that's maybe a slight discount on pump price, but not significantly. But if we could contract out with all of our underground tank storage.
Yep.
And take advantage of lower prices now, I don't know why we wouldn't do that unless there's a stabilized, stabilization issue or something like that that we have to be concerned about.
There's a few problems with that right now. Um, we could do it. Um, our pumps are so old and we have not kept up on them, probably like we should, cuz I was hoping we should ruin them.
Yeah.
And go to junction ninety-two. Um, so we would have to make an investment there if we wanted to do that now, Mark. But I can tell you, uh, we have had that conversation with Sandholt, Sheriff Sandholt. Uh, we actually looked into that. As a result of COVID, we looked into that pretty heavily. Um, Danny gave me a bunch of averages of uh, price and gallons per month that the sheriff's office uh uses and what that may look like. If we were to go to junction, it makes it much, much easier because we're gonna upgrade our entire fuel system at that point.
Correct.
It would bring the price per gallon of gasoline down for us as well because we could contract a semi-load at a time, which saves us ten cents per gallon over a tank wagon, like a straight truck, which is what we currently take. Um, and then it would also say, I don't remember offhand, I have this on my desk actually, um, how much it would save. Um, just the difference between in the same timeframe of what the sheriff's department was paying versus what we had contracted. I have that, the average difference per gallon, plus that ten cents would come off that, both of those numbers. Um, and with an automate, fully automated system, the sheriff's department would have a probably your employee ID, you would swipe it, you'd type in your unit number, it had mileage. I want mileage cuz we don't have that information now to track fuel economy.
Right.
And I'd like that. So anyway, that system would be completely automated. On our end, the only thing we would do is put in a new vehicle when it was purchased. And then that system can send the bill directly for however many gallons the sheriff's department used to them and send ours to us. Masaka County uses this system. They have schools, ambulances, fire, city, sheriff's department. I mean, they get fuel deliveries like every couple of days.
And where do they have theirs at?
In Oskaloosa, they're secondary.
That would save on fuel, on the cost of fuel. The only problem with that would be if you're, you're only gonna do it in one's place and that, that would be junction nine-two, I'm assuming. So logistically for the sheriff, it, it may cause, they're gonna have to do a little plan, you know?
Yeah, they would. Um, and we had those conversations with Jason and Troy. There's, there's a little bit of planning ahead, I guess. You know, just to, you would, and you, and the way they described it, if they were doing it, they'd still have that option to use the wax card, just like.
Right.
Just like.
I think they're gonna still, they're gonna still maybe that option because they get help from the northeast part of the county and they're down to Quarterbank and they want probably gonna have to fill up. So that's why I say it's a logistic problem and thinking ahead. You know, obviously if you go to one, one side of the county, the other side of the county, you probably wanna stop and fill up before you head there, unless you're in a hurry.
I do think there's room for some savings there. Those things, those kinda issues, we could definitely work through and there, there's workarounds for that, I believe. And I, I'm more than willing to entertain that when we go to junction, you know, that, our employee ID can open the gate, get you fuel and the gate will shut behind you, you know, we're.
I really like the idea cuz I think we can save on fuels, but we have to have that.
And we could do that now. There are a couple of challenges there, Mark. Our tanks are only so big. Now, I know we were doing it in the, in the past. I'd really like to take advantage of taking the tanker load over the tank wagon cuz that's ten cents every gallon and we burn hundreds of thousands of gallons.
Sure, sure.
And.
Well, I mean, I think, I think when you think about it like that, Tyler, one of the issues with, I know junction ninety-two is a topic as we look at your future.
Mm-hmm.
Does the savings that we would receive or incur from fuel help cover some of that cost?
Uh, six thousand dollars a year for my department alone would be the savings in fuel.
Okay.
The system's gonna cost a hundred thousand to install.
Sure.
The new fuel system. That's tank. I mean, that's, that's turnkey.
Sure. Um, but when you think about you and the sheriff, I mean, you could probably save about ten thousand dollars a year.
And it may be more than that. That six thousand dollars was going to be because our outline shops that would be combined into junction are only taking tank wagon. So I was looking at the diesel fuel only because we didn't think we'd have a big enough tank to take a tanker load of gasoline. If we have the sheriff's department, there'd be more savings there for, for our department in gasoline as well.
Okay.
So I forgot about that. That, that six thousand is just in diesel fuel by going out there.
Okay. So something to think about then, okay?
Yeah, and I, so, you know, there may be a few thousand for us in gasoline and then the sheriff's department, there were thousands of dollars per year in savings just by contracting, similar to how we are now.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, next few things I'll move through fairly quickly. This is just materials we keep in the yard.
Okay.
Normal and increased, not as bad as it has been, but because we didn't really change the quantities of things that we're buying. We'll skip that and talk about it in a second.
I was looking down Tyler.
Oh, uh, facilities.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, good.
I knew it was in there something.
Construction, we're, we're doing about the same things that we've been doing. Two to three bridges a year, four bridges. Um, with micro-surfacing seal coat. I'll talk about what that, that means here in a second. But we're kinda, you know, we're, our budgets aren't increasing enough that we're able to invest a whole bunch more in local construction right now. We're just, we're, we're just in maintenance mode. The good thing is we're not as reactive as we were five years ago. As far as just, we're, we're maintaining what we have. We're not proactive yet, but we're definitely maintaining. I think you could see that in Knoxville State. I can show you pictures from twenty sixteen versus today.
Looks.
Big difference.
Yes.
Wages, we kinda talked about this at the beginning, Mark.
Okay.
Three percent. That's kinda the trend we've been running. Um, you know, the, the Bennett, the FICA and IFRS and health insurance, that varies a little more. You know, it's not on that same trajectory as the wages themselves because of retirements, because of where people are at in their life with single fin, plans, family plans, that sort of thing. It changes every year. You can kinda see that there. Okay, fund balance projection. So every year you guys see this. Um, if revenues basically stayed completely stagnant, nothing really changed and we continue spending money as we are, that's what the orange line would represent. We, we couldn't sustain that and that's what I talked about early, earlier. Um, the green line's where we wanna be. We wanna maintain about a million-dollar fund balance. That's kinda been that arbitrary, arbitrary number that I think Roger used it before me and that, and, and, you know, it's, it's not a, you have a major bridge, that's not enough, but it'll get you through most of.
We're not, yeah, I hear so many of these counties that are just bonding for rock and, you know, things and.
So that's a good stable number. And, and we know, we've been through a few flood issues and, and we can carry the load with that million in, in a kinda the average flood. So the blue line represents if we were to just uh spend money as usual and kinda maintain uh the levels on all our expense line items. But at the end of the year, revenues typically are a little bit higher than what I budget and expenses are not a hundred percent of what we budget. So that's what the blue line represents. Reality is the purple line. You know, we, we adjust and, and like I said, monthly, I'm looking at revenues and expenses and, and adjusting. And, you know, we have major equipment purchases and then we have years where we don't. We have major projects and then we have years where we don't. That's what the purple line represents and I think if you look back, you can see that that is pretty accurate. On, you know, this is a projection, but if you look back, we're doing that same thing. Actually, here, here, this is looking back.
Okay.
So, uh, you could, actual expense is the red, budgeted is the red dash line and green is the actual revenue. So revenue's typically trending a little higher than we budget. Uh, one hundred and four-point-eight or four-point-eight percent higher than projected or budgeted and then we're about ninety-two percent on the expense of what we budget, which is, I think, similar to what you guys talked about for other departments or the county as a whole. And as we talk, I'm about ninety-six percent on some of the wage items for them. And that largely depends on construction projects too. You know, sometimes we just run into a snag and can't get something done. And, you know, there, that might be two or three hundred thousand dollars right there that we don't spend. I could send these to you too if you wanna look at them. Do you have any questions on that, Keisha?
I'm just looking at the trend. I mean, you know what I mean? That's just, just observing.
Uh, some things that we did last year uh that were different, uh, you know, efficiencies and practices that we put into place to make ourselves more effective and more efficient. The picture on the left would be gravel road stabilization that I talked about. Uh, that's really performing well even through the winter. I, it's looking.
What you did on low drive is, is really worked too.
Yeah, I, I mean, that stuff, it, it takes a big investment upfront, but it definitely pays itself off. Uh, you know, by the book, it pays itself off in four to five years, most of these stabilization practices. Um, but, you know, they may pay, pay themselves off quicker than that, depending on the type of year that you have and weather, so. Um, another alternative to bridge replacement that we, we did with our own crews, uh, they built this aluminum box cover, if they call it. Um, that's not the finished product, obviously, but something we, I could see us implementing more of in the future.
Good.
Micro-surfacing, this is an alternative I tried five years ago up in Ollie. Kind of was a test section. Uh, we were really impressed with it. It's kinda an alternative to seal coat. There are some advantages and disadvantages, just like seal coat. Um, but uh the durability of this and its leveling capability, you know, have, have really proven themselves up in Ollie. So we wanted to try that on some of our seal coat roads and yeah, the, the thing it doesn't have is that flexibility. It's a little, it's more brittle in, at the end result. But it has that leveling. The best results, uh, based on my research, are a combination of this and seal coat. So maybe alternating them every other year or every other cycle.
Okay.
This last four to five years, seal coats about every three. They're actually about the same price.
You're not gonna fly that unless you have a very stabilized base.
You're right, Steve, uh, we have to be pretty selective where we do it. We, this is not for every seal coat road out there, it's actually designed for pavements. And, and that's where we tried it in Ollie, but we thought some of our seal coats were in good enough, uh, shape that we could, uh. Go ahead and try it there, Steve, and we've had pretty good luck with it so far, but you're exactly right, you have to have the base there to do that. This is something I've tried to find a solution for, for a while, these wide cracks, your typical crack sealing methods do not take care of them. We've had a few vendors come in in the office and, but the price was just astronomical. And then, we buy a lot of stuff from Logan Contractor Supply in Des Moines, he's like, well, we, we've got this machine to rent, and I think it'll work for your, and, and our product that you can buy, and. So we did, we rented it, tried it, and it's, it's been fantastic.
It has, good, okay.
Not peeled out, uh, the city of Knoxville actually tried it first.
Okay.
On South Street, two, maybe two years ago, and we were real, we went and watched them put it in, and then I've been kinda monitoring it, and it's performed really well. They did some right there by the movie gallery or Family Video also. It doesn't look great, but it definitely does the job.
Key factor would be the product, right?
Right.
The product, and the cleanliness of the crack is a key factor, but we're really impressed with it.
Cuz does it must adhere to something of some sort?
Yeah, it'll fall into that, to the concrete.
Okay.
But it's just another tool in our toolbox, um, as far as sustainability, because otherwise, in the past, we'd have just let this go, and eventually it'd have been a concrete patch for a much higher price per square yard, so. Shoulders, you know, like I said, we, we're putting some money into shoulder because we finally found a way to efficiently do shoulder. We rented this machine that you see in the right-hand picture, uh, from a company in Des Moines, and we, we've really struggled, there's good ways to do shoulder without making a giant mess and getting rock all over the road and. And hiring a contractor, you know, we could always hire a contractor to do it, but, you know, we were looking for a, a tactic for our crews to use and, uh, to do, and, and they found this machine, and it's worked out really, really well for us.
Do you rent the machine still, or do you own one now?
No, we rent it, Warren County has one now.
Okay.
So we maybe will look at borrowing instead of renting.
Do, yeah, okay.
We had to rent the skid loader too, because ours was not big enough to, to handle that attachment.
The attachment's on the skid loader.
Oh, it is, okay, I didn't realize, see, it looks like it's hooked onto the back of the truck.
No, and the truck's in neutral, the skid loader's pushing the truck up the hill.
Really?
Yeah, it's kinda like an asphalt paper, it's got rollers on the front, so we bump up against the rear tires of the truck, and it's pushing the truck up the hill.
Wow.
And the guy downhill, the guys ride the brakes in the truck and let the machine push it.
That's.
But it's worked really well, you can see how nice of a shoulder it's laying out there, and then we're coming behind that and compacting that. Um, Keisha, that might look a little familiar.
Yeah.
We demoed that machine on, on low drive, uh, it's just an attachment, it was a demo, we ended up purchasing it.
You did, okay.
We, we, this is about the third different device or machine that we've tried to try to break up the sod, and this can work for many different applications. This can work on shoulders, this can work of, of highways, this can work on shoulders or gravel road, kinda when, in the spring, when we, when conditions are right, we try to gather up all that loose rock and bring it back. And you get a little bit of sod sometimes, and, and we're looking at a good way to break that up, otherwise, it's just multiple passes of the motor grader working it back and forth into your blade. So there was definitely some efficiency gains, and in, and on this regrade project, you know, we just had this thing following the graders around, and it worked fantastic, and you could literally just blow the grass and saw it out of there, so.
That's helped that road tremendous, it's impressive, and just that grade, I think that grade, if you can do that other places.
Uh, we have hundreds of miles in there. Yeah, yeah, we, we know, I mean, it, it makes a difference.
It does.
And then stockpiling, uh, I think last year I hadn't really got into this, I had, I think last year at my budget session, I told you, we were implementing a comprehensive rock specification. For quality and gradation, that, we did that, I believe it was in January, and that has been very good for us, um, we, we believe our rock quality has increased. And we, at the same time, we're looking at stockpile, how could we gain efficiencies in our hauling operations? And I was very hesitant to do this, because on paper, when I run the numbers and calculate mileage and cost of a tandem versus a belly dump semi, and this and that, haul distances, and. It was a very complicated process, and I wasn't confident that we could make up the difference. There were a lot of assumptions there, and, you know, we hadn't done it really lately, I, I think in the past, Steve, maybe twenty years ago, we stockpiled. But I don't know that we looked at it as in-depth as we did this time, and I, and a lot of the guys that are here now weren't there then. So I've made a lot of assumptions on whether this would actually pay off, so we just had to try and compare the numbers to my assumptions. And what we found is it definitely did, you know, I was, I set the guy, I set a goal for the guy, I said, if we haul into the stockpile, every truck has gotta get eighteen loads a day, we, we averaged eight out of the quarry.
Oh, okay.
When we haul into the stockpile to make up the difference of hauling in and out, and the loader trying to unload you and load you, we have to get eighteen loads a day.
Those costs are kinda deceptive, because when you talk about stockpile, you're stockpiling a graded, a gradation rock, as opposed to some rock you would buy. It looks like it's cheaper to haul cuz you're closer, but then the rock don't last as long cuz I didn't meet the gradation, so, so those, those are kinda deceptive on the costs there.
Correct, and the price per ton.
Right.
Ended up being cheaper. Uh, because we're hauling more from one quarry and as our, as our tonnage, annual tonnage goes up, their price comes down.
Right, but also it goes back to that gradation spec.
Yeah.
If you can get that spec, your rock's gonna last a lot longer out on the road, so those costs, those costs, those costs are gonna go down because you don't have to haul twice.
Yep. So actually, I told the foreman, we gotta get eighteen loads a day, but I said, don't tell your guys that, I, you know, I, I want a real number, what can we actually haul? And they got twenty to twenty-four loads a day on average.
Wow, okay.
And eighteen will break even point.
Good.
So hauling the same tonnage of a better quality lo, rock at a cheaper price per ton, we can do it two days quicker. So that's two days of savings in a two-week time period.
Awesome, thank you.
But we are looking at more stockpiling options.
It makes sense.
Yeah, I wasn't, you know, two days is, you know, I wasn't sure we could get that.
Yeah.
But even if we were gonna break even, we were probably gonna do it anyway, cuz we knew it was a better quality material. Another part of our department is our roadside vegetation management program, IRVM department, um, this comes directly out of Fund eleven, this is not out of Fund twenty. But I do the budgeting for Randy, Randy, Randy manages the, the department, I manage his budget, or him and I, and, um. You know, everything's pretty standard here, you do see an overall increase at the bottom of about forty-two percent, and this is very cyclical, based on what equipment he's purchasing, what grants he's going after. There are no grants for mowers anymore, um, the. Living Roadway Trust Fund does not include, you know, their, their funds got cut by the legislators, and they, they only allow mowers for brush mowing now instead of just a grass mower. But we have a machine that can't stay out of the shop right now, it's, it's high hour, we, we need to replace it. There'll be some trade value there, which is not represented, um, because we may look at selling it through auction, but we'll ultimately come back into this department, but that revenue is not being shown here, so. So not, not any big changes there, uh, any questions on IRVM, it's pretty much the same, um, we have been hiring a contractor out of road department funds to do some brush cutting, and you may have seen this, cuz we've done T seventeen, T fifteen. Randy will have to follow up and spray for the rush and all of, and the honey stock and all that stuff.
Is that that track outside by the landfill?
Yeah. That, we can't go out, I can't send a guy to pick up out there for what this guy does it for, he comes out of Corden, and it's so cheap, but, I don't know, we, we've done it for two years now, and, uh, so.
So Tyler, we're about, about ten o'clock.
Yep.
I'm fascinated, I learn so much when I sit in after you.
Okay.
So, so I think, keep, keep going, and Karen, it'll probably run a little over, that's okay.
I'm okay.
My, my last topic is junction.
Yeah.
And it's not gonna be the, uh, is what it was last year, so I just wanna give you an update on things.
Yep, yep.
So, just some, you know, there's the fuel savings, just wanna remind you, that's six thousand in diesel, um. Just some reminders of why, other reasons, you know, we need, either need to make investments in our current facilities or, or move. So, snow, ice, rain, everything comes in North Wall, our pellet shop, our pellet shop's tight. I don't even like to show this picture, cuz you can't get to that exit door in the back of that left-hand picture. You know, this, and this isn't even everything, there's an inloader that's gotta cram in there yet too, and, and we're fighting this everywhere, not just at Pella. This is my office, I know you guys hear complaints like this all the time, I do not wanna invest a bunch of money into my office to insulate it better. Steve used to wear long johns every day to work in the winter.
He probably still does, what are you talking about?
I'm gonna have to actually wear sleeves, cuz it's gonna be that cold in our office, but you can see thermostat's at seventy-one and it's fifty-nine.
Yeah.
It, it's pretty cold in there, and there's, that's, I really don't know what we can do about that, that's what probably six space heaters going to, and a hanging heater in the back.
Do we, the, the money that, um, you know, when you, if we were to do ninety-two, the money such as the building in Pella and stuff like that, you've figured that into what was, okay.
Yep, we'll get there.
Okay.
And yes, our office, I don't know, Steve looked at this when he was there.
Yeah.
I think, we can't find this leak, I don't know where it's at, but it leaks, gets all over everything in the back, it's been worse lately, we cannot find it. I think Steve and Brian have caught every crack they could find in the west wall of our building. You know, we add an oxygen in our shop. Some of that, some things like that, uh, are preventable, um, but what we don't wanna do is make it worse, and we just, you, you can see from these pictures, our shop is so tight on space, and. It, I mean, I hate to show that picture on the left, but that's the reality, when they're working on something, they've got tools and parts strung out, it's a mess, and there's not room to maneuver, uh, around equipment. We, they've been doing a really good job about getting something in and then cleaning up the area, or getting that piece of equipment in and out, and cleaning it up. Uh, but that doesn't change the fact of, about the amount of room we have to maneuver in there, and, and our, uh. Safety committee, I think Jeff and Lisa have commented on that many times, that we really need to keep those areas clean adjacent to the equipment for, uh, potential incidents, so. I don't know what just happened. Okay, Mark, so, summary of where we are at, so here's what we've done to date, since we met last year, here's what we've done, we expanded the IRVM building, which was budgeted. We budgeted to do the site grading, that's complete, if you haven't been by there, it looks drastically different, that was about sixty thousand dollars to do all that grading. We have, uh, started the detention basin design and drainage design, I have not finished that yet, but some, we're taking it kinda piece by piece, the guys have done some work out there, and I've designed part of it, and I still have something to do. Utilities, we've had some fair, fairly lengthy discussions here with, uh, water and electric recently. Rural Water's looking into the possibility of fire suppression through a sprinkler system for our shop, we think that would be a good addition, it's costly, uh, but we're gonna have a lot of dollars wrapped up in a new facility. And if it's, if we're capable of doing fire suppression, we definitely wanna look into that, now's the time to do it. Fire protection as far as, uh, having a hydrant out there is also a possibility, he was not sure, so they are reviewing that as well. Even if, uh, it's a low-volume hydrant to fill or supplement, not necessarily pull off of with a pump truck, uh, that's still something we're gonna look into. So, he's gonna let us know, and it would be a private hydrant, this would be on our site, it would be ours, and it would be on our side of the meter. That, that's different than in the city.
Can we use it, utilize the detention basin as part of that fire?
Uh.
I know years ago.
I had not thought about that, but that would have to be a retention basin, and I had not considered designing.
Cuz years ago, we put these, these pumps in these ponds.
Yeah.
For the rural fire.
I don't know that we'd have the drainage.
Okay, I'm, I'm just taking outside the box, Tyler.
Your communications and fiber, that's a.
Yep, it's not initiated as far as, it's the discussion of getting it to the site, Andrew had talked, it's available nearby.
It is, okay.
Have an estimated cost of what it would take to get it to the site, so nothing is initiated as far as getting it into the site, but we know it's capable.
It's capable, that's, that was my biggest question for you, is making sure we weren't going out there and now all of a sudden we.
No, we've had that discussion.
Don't have any internet.
Yep, uh, that was a big sticking point for us too, cuz we've had the wireless point-to-point, and that's not great.
Okay.
Electric, we need to get our building designed, they have a preliminary layout, transformer, uh, the size and everything, but they wanna know what our actual loads will be in the new building before they finalize everything. So we have a draft agreement and everything sitting on my desk to move forward with getting that stuff into our site.
Okay.
It's gonna be about twenty-five thousand dollars, the water's gonna be about ten thousand dollars, um, barring any cost of the oversized meter, which they don't have, he didn't know what that would cost. I don't remember the cost of communication, I wanna say it was around twenty or thirty thousand dollars to get it there, but it's well worth it, we know that. Uh, LP, Steve Edwards has a couple of tanks that we're gonna use.
Okay.
Out of Cordova, so we'll get those this year. So the development sequence from this point forward, um, there's some minor grading to do around the detention areas.
Who went out to VA, is there, is there a LP tank out to VA?
I have no idea, actually, that's a good question, huh? Cold storage building, we received a quote, just, this was just a rough quote, so we knew whether or not we needed to bid the project, uh, we did not, so we're gonna proceed with that in twenty-two. The next thing would be to follow up with the salt, sand storage, either an addition or a new building. And then, uh, the main shop.
Let me tell this out there, have you, have you looked at, re, re, given any more thoughts to, uh, pre-treating as opposed, if, if we pre-treated, would we need this additional salt and sand storage? I don't know what that initial cost would be off the equipment.
You been talking to Thor?
No.
He's got a bill right here for, uh, legislation to reduce salt usage in local agencies.
Is he gonna help pay for it?
No, I mean, that, that's the problem with that, with that whole thing, is it's at a minimum, it's gonna cost us about forty-four hundred dollars per truck.
To, to set, to set up for pre-treating, plus you gotta have storage tanks somewhere.
Something to go with it, they don't do it, you just don't go anywhere, put the sand out, there you go.
What we do is we're, yeah, uh, so to your point though, Steve, what we have been considering, and Mike's been doing a bunch of research on this, is going to straight the salt. Instead of salt-sand mix, so there are a few counties that do that, there's a time and a place for it, it would not, it would not increase the amount of salt we're putting down, we just wouldn't have the sand with it.
Okay.
So we run a sixty-forty mix at eight hundred ton, or pounds in lane mile, we would back our spreaders off to whatever that forty percent of salt would be.
But still, there's a temperature variant there that, it either works or it don't work.
But we have that right now.
We have it now, yeah.
So, all, yes, that's part of the whole thing Mike's looking into right now, yes.
Okay.
So we have no definite plan. Okay, here's the funding part, this is my last slide.
All right, that's.
Yeah, that's it.
It's, it's punchline, Tyler.
Yep, so, little higher cost, we're, I, I was at three point five billion, we're more like four billion now, um, some county departments, road departments have built facilities lately. So I updated the numbers, um. So I updated the numbers. Uh so there there's the, you can, I'll send this to you. You can look at it. That's the timeline and what I estimate them to cost. So how will we pay for it? I think I said this last week, we're, we have more flexibility now than we did a year ago. I mean, even though you guys did the elevator project. I think as far as local auction sales tax and secondary road fund, even the general fund is still sitting pretty good. If you look at Jake's cash flow spreadsheet. And with the exception of the capital improvement fund, it went down.
Right.
But I think as far as flexibility across all funds, we're better off than we were a year ago for this type of project. To fund this type of project directly with cash on hand. I mean, there are other options, but what I did was I looked at cash on hand and I tried to keep it as simple as possible. So really, we're gonna pay for most of it with secondary road fund until we get to the main shop.
Right.
And then, so in that FY twenty-four, a million dollars, that was in that fund balance projection I showed you earlier for Fund Twenty. I have that million dollars planned. Keisha, to your point, three hundred twenty-five thousand was the latest appraisal. We'll have to do another one again.
Okay.
To get that updated.
Cause I know that they would like to, yeah.
And then uh local auction sales tax is carrying a pretty hefty balance right now. We haven't done any secondary road projects or conservation projects there lately. So it's gonna have about two million dollars in it in FY twenty-four if it's renewed. That local auction sales tax ballot does have a sunset of December of twenty twenty-three.
So the the sale of this existing shop, that's clay and pellet.
You're gonna email us this, right?
Yep.
That's clay and pellet.
Yep.
That's the only one we're gonna make make any money off, those two. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I never accounted for, and I told you this last year, the central shop office is the conservation boards.
Right.
I'm not saying that it isn't a possibility of money there, but I was never counting on that. That's at their discretion.
I wouldn't count on that either.
That's kind of between you and them, really, and and them.
Yeah, so there's, yeah, it's kind of a three-part deal right now that we'll.
I know.
Talk about, yeah.
Yeah, I know about that. So so we would need some help here. Uh you know, local auction sales tax is obviously at your discretion. You know, we would need authorization to kind of plan to use those funds. And then we'd still come up a little bit short, um estimating about four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. There'd still be enough money there uh from local auction sales tax to finish the project out.
Okay.
It would bring that balance down if it's renewed. And the other thing is after twenty twenty-four, if you guys don't change anything on how uh you you do debt relief from local auction sales tax or anything like that, the LEC payment comes off.
Right.
So there's gonna be more money going into the project fund or project side of local auction sales tax immediately after we use up the balance, basically.
Right.
Uh so there's there's quite a bit to be discussed here. We can do it later. I just wanted to kind of give you the overview right now.
Yeah, if you could send that to Tyler and what I'd like to do is really do a couple of different scenarios. I'm I'm a I'm a faster is better kind of person. Steve Edwards had to deal with this first term. Remember the pond project?
Yep.
They were they were on a five-year window. Cause I think they were also talking with you about use of those funds and we accelerated that to a two-year window, largely because of cost inflation.
That's what I was just gonna say. We went from four and a half to, yeah.
So is there?
Or three and a half to four.
I guess what I'd like you to take a look at, are there scenarios that work both operationally and financially that would maybe shave off a year and a half of this?
Definitely. This is all based around cash on hand.
Yep, yep.
From from what I see. And that's not taking any big chunk out of the general fund.
Right.
Or any other potential sources.
Yep, yep. So you could look at it from both this perspective, but then maybe shave off a year and a half. And what that would look like and what that cash shortfall would be. And then we can have a discussion about what that might where that might come from.
Yep, I'm probably pretty close to that already.
Okay.
I've got a few.
Some efficiencies, too, that we could save, yeah.
Okay.
Twenty-foot doors.
Excellent, okay.
Okay.
Tyler, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler.
As always. Anybody wanna take five minutes before we switch?
I gotta go to the restroom, yeah, real quick.
Take a five-minute recess, then we'll talk with Karen for our end of work.
Okay, we're reconvening.
Hi, Danny. How are you, Danny?
You're up.
I can't hear you, Danny. I'm trying to read your lips there. I think that was rap. No? No?
I like it better that way.
You can hear us, but we just can't hear you.
Still can't hear you, Danny. Testing.
That's Jake, I guess. Let's see where's. I don't know.
It's not Jody a second ago. She's in the room, but.
Yeah, but I'll see where Danny is. There you, there you are.
Danny.
We can hear you.
Oh, technical difficulties here. Hold on.
How about now?
Karen, we'll get it soon.
We can hear you.
We can hear you now. Can you hear us?
Hi, guys.
Hi, guys.
Danny?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, except we're gonna have a, you got a real bad uh lang echo. Turn turn one of your other mics off.
There we go.
Much better. Much better. Okay.
Is that okay?
Yep, yep.
Sorry about that.
It's all right. Not a problem. All right, we're back in session. Uh as I noted, I've got a phone call at ten-thirty I've gotta take, so I'm gonna bug out of here and let you guys get started with Marion County Recorder Karen Schwannaback. Karen, thank you.
You're welcome.
Coming and uh look forward to hearing uh budget stuff. So I'm gonna head out, Keisha.
Okay.
It's all yours. I'll be back in a half hour.
Awesome, all right. Hi, Karen.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm good.
Good, okay. So looking over, um just looking some big picture.
Yeah.
Here, if we wanna look at your first item regarding salaries.
Yes.
So can you explain a little bit how to
Yes.
increase here that's?
Right. So last year, that line was just for two people.
Okay.
And then if you would skip down to part-time, there was twenty thousand five hundred and two dollars as a part-time person.
Okay, I'm trying to find where you're at. Okay, right here. Yep, I see where you're at.
Fourth one down.
Yeah, see that, Steve?
Okay.
Okay.
So we no longer have the part-time for this budget, but we have three people in that first line.
So you've increased it, okay.
So that's three people instead of two.
Okay.
So that um that's the increase there.
So there's the budget at eighty-nine plus twenty. Okay, all right, okay. So overall, what did you put as an increase? Cause we're seeing a large number. And
Right.
That's just because you you know, you've brought in that twenty thousand. Is it a three? What is an overall that you put in there?
When I figured it out, not having any direction, you know, this year to start with, I went with four percent.
Okay.
So um Naomi, who's the third one down, um as deputy, if you see that that's still under what the budget was for last year, and that's even with her increase. And that's because I have her at eighty percent.
Okay.
This year, this coming year.
Okay.
As opposed to the eighty-five that the previous deputy was at. And I actually have kind of crunched some numbers. Might as well jump into that right now. Um I would like to increase that top number even more. Okay, um and my rationalization is I've got three people in that first line.
Okay.
And there's quite a difference in their salaries, although there's not a lot of difference in their work duties or their time. Uh Michael is my most recent employee, but he has a lot of duties. He has become a US passport agent, um has just done an excellent job. He devoured that book. He has, I'm almost thinking of photographic memory. It's just unbelievable.
Okay.
They, we did have our um our testing from the national people and we got a hundred percent again as usual. So I mean, just an absolute rock star. When I took Jamie on um as my new employee, she was already at um forty thousand dollars a year.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, she applied with me, obviously.
So she was a transfer.
I wanted her, but I would have to offer her the same amount that she was getting. But that's quite a difference between what Renee and Michael are making.
Okay.
Uh Michael is a thirty-five, Renee is a thirty-six. So if I would be able to bring them up closer closer to what Jamie is making. So it would be increasing that um by three thousand, three hundred and five dollars from what I've already budgeted. But this sick leave of three thousand dollars, I will not need that this year. I didn't know that at first. So I'd be able to give up that, three thousand. There's also um eighteen thirteen unused deputy pay.
Oh, eighteen thirteen, okay, yep, I see where you're saying.
Okay. And then I would like to read, you know, if this is agreeable with you, then if you go on the second page, third one down, planning, management and technology, twelve thousand dollars there. I'm down to one company instead of two that I have had all these years. And I would reduce that by another four thousand. So in essence, giving the county back eight thousand, eight hundred and thirteen, but only spending an additional three thousand of that. So I'll give you five. You can give me three. How's that for let's make a deal?
Okay, yeah.
That way my overall budget is less. But my employees are gonna be happier. Michael will be able to quit his part-time job.
Okay. So when you look at your overall here down, you know, when we look at your general basic, from okay, so you increased roughly, let's see, reestimate uh seventeen possibly. Yeah, so that'd be six percent, you say, overall increase.
So then that would actually be less than what my budget was for last.
Yeah. You mean? Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out here because your twenty nineteen, you ended with, you know, two sixty-five and then your reestimates two seventy-one this year and now it's, you know, budgeted for two eighty-eight.
Where are you at?
I'm at the end of general basic. Not looking, not not looking at supplemental. Are you looking at overall at the?
Oh, okay. So you are at the end of general supplemental?
Yep.
At the ninety-eight?
Not supplemental, no, general basic fund.
General basic.
Yep, it's on page two.
Okay.
Do you have that? Do you guys have the same fund we do? Yep, okay.
And I don't have a total there.
You don't? Okay.
So what do you have for a total there?
Oh, um I have a total of two eighty-eight, three twenty. So it's overall a six percent.
Okay.
Increase.
About seventeen thousand dollars.
Yep. From your from this year to next year, yeah. Okay, um Karen, are you? I mean, overall, are are, you know, you've got the new equipment, new desks. I mean, do you see anything?
I don't see that we're gonna need. The only thing, of course, the copier could go. Um it's been doing well. We've had maintenance on a few times. But that would be it. I mean, all of our new desks, we paid for that out of our special fund. It didn't come out of the general fund. Um so yes, we have all new desks.
Okay.
I think it looks really nice.
So we're set for another twenty years?
I hope so, cause you know, the ones that we had before didn't last us twenty years.
Yeah.
And they were pretty reasonable and we bought those from that same fund. So um I'll be gone by then. I'll let them worry about that.
I don't know that any of us will be here in twenty years.
But no, they seem really well well-built. We've had, you know, a couple of things where maybe a drawer didn't close just right and they've been really good to come out and tweak whatever needed fixed.
I I I guess I'm I'm having a hard time following on how you're juggling the the wages again.
Okay. So.
And and how you're making up for that?
Okay.
You're making up for it. You're giving up three thousand dollars sick leave and.
Giving up the three thousand dollar sick leave. And then um
What was that other one?
If you look on the third one down, the deputy deputy salary.
Okay.
Last year was sixty-one, eight thirteen.
Mm-hmm.
This year with her increase, it's sixty.
So it's eighteen.
So it's, there's eighteen there. One thousand eight.
Yeah, eighteen hundred.
Yeah, thirteen dollars. And that's just the difference between eighty and eighty-five.
And then you said four something and that was for um.
And that is on your technology on the second page. And it's the third one down. And then, you know.
At a twelve.
Also, yeah. We would reduce that twelve to um eight.
Reduce that to eight?
Yep, reduce that to eight.
So that's four.
Yep, so four and then you got three in the first page.
Three and eighteen, right?
And eighteen.
Four, three and eighteen?
Yep, eighty-eight thirteen.
So that's gonna make up the difference on what you're trying to bump up these people?
Do you have it in your budget currently is what you're saying? You have?
Yes.
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 That's what I'm, that's my understanding.
Yeah, so it's in my budget. I'm just moving money around.
Okay. Well, that makes a little, that makes it a little clearer up here.
Right. I still think that it would be interesting to do and maybe work with Lisa, um you know, for both your department and the treasures department and seeing, you know, do you feel like you are at the you know, whether it needs to be like an entry level, then, you know, years of experience.
I agree.
And and maybe that's something that I feel that we do need to look at because of of your department's and maybe um.
And they're similar and, you know, of course, you know, the the federal accreditation for the passport is different. But but basic, yeah, they're basically the same.
Right.
And I struggle with this every time I go to do a new employee and and I get I get an answer, this is what, you know, the current going rate is. And then I see a posting that's so far different than what I've done.
So um.
And my people notice it.
Yeah. I think it's it's going to be, you know, maybe doing the tiers of, you know, what's this level considered at? And then, you know, um yeah, I do think that that is important.
Yeah.
And then also so is, you know, when you have a situation such as, you know, transfer in department. Um yeah, okay.
Because they're still covered under the county. They're under the county insurance. They're under. Because they're still covered under the county, they're under the county insurance, they're under IFRS, everything, but...
Yep.
Yeah, there needs to be a little better structure.
I, I have a little bit of a...
And I, and, and, yep.
You know, and that's, that's my point I'm making. We need to be a better structure, more fair for the employees.
Yeah.
And I'm willing to make it up in my budget. I just think it would be nice if it was more equitable across the board.
So Karen, you know, overall this year, we've been asking the question, um, you know, we're, we're doing, we're doing better. We are as a county, um, we have been able to, um, with technology, with COVID, being able to. How do you feel in regards to, um, the transition, meaning doing more things online? Um, do you feel that everybody is adapting to that? Do you think that there's anything that we can do differently there?
That's a good word, adapt, is everybody adapting?
Um, there are a lot of people who are adapting. There are a lot of people who are, are still not, you know. There's just, there's people who still have flip phones and they just, they're not going to embrace that technology. Every day we have people come up and, you know, the question is, do you have an appointment? No, do I need an appointment? I mean, it's every day.
Okay.
And, and our answer is always, you know, let me look at the schedule. We have someone coming in in the next five minutes for an appointment. If you'll just have a seat, we're gonna work on you.
Try working you in.
And we're gonna work you in, and we do work them in.
Okay, good.
But they might have to wait, you know, a few minutes, which they were used to waiting if they were standing behind someone anyway.
Do they, do they leave with the knowledge that next time they come up there, it's gonna have to be an appointment?
That's what we always say. So next time, please try to make an appointment and if you don't have that capability, call us.
Well, yeah, they got a phone, they can call.
Just call us, we'll set the appointment for you and then you'll get in and out each year. Um, last year we ended up doing two thousand documents more than we had the previous year, which was huge in a pandemic. Um, and...
Do you think people were trying to get things, um, shored up, meaning like, I've got, I've had this setting here, let me take care of that?
At time?
It's a combination of things, um, the stimulus money, as soon as that stimulus money came out, people were buying ATVs and boats like crazy. And I think part of that was they knew we're not gonna be able to go on vacation. So we might as well do something that we can do at home with our families. We can do it every weekend instead of taking a two-week vacation to some other place.
Yep.
So I think that was part of that.
There's a little logic to that.
Yep, because, because we did see a huge uptick in those. Also, interest rates, people have been refinancing like crazy.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's a new mortgage and then that mortgage is assigned most times and the previous mortgage is released. So there's three documents right there for one person, minimum. We are already up almost three hundred documents over last year for January.
For just this year?
Yeah. So will it even out? It depends on where the interest rates go. People are still refinancing.
How do you think the flow?
It's a buyer's market.
How's the flow up there? Is it going okay at the courthouse? The flow of all the?
Of the departments? I think so. Um, you know, you, we still get the people who come up and say, I have a boat and a trailer, do I do that? I'll hear. And it's like, well, and, 'cause it makes sense, 'cause you bought it together.
Yep.
But, well, you do the boat here and you do the trailer there. Or they'll call and say, I need to get my birth certificate, 'cause I wanna get my driver's license, the star. Great. And what we tell them is, call them first. Get your appointment with them, because they're more, they're booked solider, if that's a word, than we are. So you get your appointment. If your appointment is at nine o'clock tomorrow with them, call us back and tell us. We'll get you in before that to get your birth certificate, so you're ready when you go there.
Great. And, and, you know, we provide services and so that's, I mean, it is, yeah, and that's...
That is what our job is.
Yep, and I think excellent work on your part, working them in, because, um...
Yeah.
We don't wanna send them back.
Yeah, and you have to say, oh, well, you're gonna have to stay here for two hours. Yeah, that doesn't, yeah.
There was an incident, um, Monday. That was more a personality issue, you know, there are people that you are just not gonna please.
Really?
Yeah, surely not. She had a, a record from, it had to be the record that her mother got at her birth. You know, it was a carbon copy. It had a picture of the head of IDPH. I've been with the county twenty-five years. This woman has not been the head of IDPH in twenty-five years. But she swears she paid good money for this last year in Des Moines.
Oh, bless her.
And that wouldn't work for her driver's license, because it had nothing on it other than her name and her birthday.
Right.
And, you know, as nice as we tried to convince her, she, we were wrong and she was not happy and she was going to IDPH yesterday.
Okay.
And when they proved that we were wrong, we were gonna hear about it.
Okay.
And we haven't heard from her since. And I looked up this director, you're gonna love this. She died in two thousand and seven at age ninety-five.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah.
It could have been, yeah.
It was when she was born back in nineteen seventy that she was the director, but...
Yeah.
She had given the girls a bad time at driver's license and, and when they do that, they just say, okay, well, let's just check out the recorder to see if this'll work.
Right.
And so then we get to reiterate that, no, I'm sorry, that's, that's not a rubber certificate. But it happens, but I think the flow is pretty good. Um, people are finding us all. Um, the new screens, they seem to really like those.
Okay.
Um, whether it's because there's pictures now.
Yeah.
So they can see where everybody is instead of all of that writing. People don't tend to read everything.
Visual, I mean, yeah, you're, I think you're absolutely right. It's because of the, a diagram.
Yes, it's just like the website, you know. I don't have a problem with the website that we currently have because I'm used to it. It's what we've had for so many years. And now you look at the new examples of what this company is doing. There's so much less information, but what you want is right there.
Yeah.
Point and click.
Mm-hmm.
It's so much more user-friendly.
It is, yes.
Yeah, it's going to be amazing.
So, you know, we, we've been talking to different departments, you know, obviously, and we asked this question is, you know, we have been doing very, we're very blessed in this county right now.
Yeah.
But financially, um, you know, we know that it, it has its ups and downs.
Absolutely.
Um, is, when looking at your budget, if we were on a downturn, what is something that, you know, where, where do you feel like, where would you go if we were, you know, we were budgeting?
If we were to turn the other way, where, where would you make cuts?
Everywhere. You know, I've never used all of my budget to begin with. Um, I do have my special funds, which I budget ten thousand dollars every year. There are specific things that I can use them for. It's what I've always used to buy all of the computers in our office, all of the desks, copy machines, all of that come out of that special fund. So it's not coming out of...
We're, we're asking everybody.
The general.
Yeah, so don't feel like it's...
No, 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 it, well, it's a fair question.
Because would we not always be blessed?
No, um, I remember years when, you know, the email would go out.
Yeah, I, I think the point of it is...
That you can't even buy copy paper because there is no cash flow.
I think the point of it is, Karen, just to get people thinking at a time.
Well, and, you know, it was a wonderful presentation that we had last week, but you can't fall under that false hope that we have this budget and we have, we have a balance. So just 'cause you got it, doesn't mean you should spend it.
That's right.
Right, um, so when looking at your, uh, overall here, it looks like, um, FY twenty-one is the same. It's roughly eighty-eight percent is employee, um, operations is twelve. Um, it's the same as FY twenty-one is into FY twenty-two. Um, again, it goes back to, um, we provide services. We don't, we don't have, we're not a revenue generating business, so, um, yeah. Steve, do you have any further questions or?
No, I, you know, if Karen feels that she can get, do this within this budget she has and maybe her employees will be happier.
I would like...
Her life will better, Karen.
I have an amazing team. Um, you know, I've always had good employees, but to be honest with you, right now, as far as working cohesively together, this is the best team I've ever had.
Okay.
They are so supportive of each other. They have each other's back. There's none of this, it's your turn to go to the counter, that, which I've not experienced that anyway. Or could you get the phone? The phone rings, it's picked up within this, by the second ring. That's just an adaptation in my office, but they do work so well together. And it's, at the end of the day, you know, this may be your job, that you take this pile of papers off of the copy machine and staple the documents before they come to my desk. But anybody who's not busy at that time will say, hey, give me half of that stuff. That didn't always happen before.
Okay.
Um, and there was a cute thing on Facebook the other day where someone said, I knew when 3M was hiring people who were my kids' age or close to my grandkids' age, it was time for me to retire. And I, I started to laugh and I thought, you know what? This whole team is younger than my kids. And I hadn't really thought about that.
Right.
But I, they're amazing.
Yeah.
They are amazing and they are so smart and they're so, they just absorb technology.
Yeah, the generation is very good at that.
It's second nature to them. I have to learn it. They just seem to know it.
I have to have my grandkids help me, or Keisha.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, I...
And I still get frustrated.
I had an issue with my phone the other day and I, I said, why won't, why can't I answer my phone in my car? And Michael took my phone and he said, because the Bluetooth is off, he handed it to me.
Right, yeah, okay.
No, I haven't. I, I'm, I'm okay.
Okay.
So what will, um, we will have ultimately a wrap-up on Friday and where we're at.
Wonderful.
And then, um, uh, we'll do an ov, you know, overview of everything and, and where we're, um, at. So, and I think we'll give a, you know, projection. I do think that, um, you know, working within your budget is important. Um, I do need you to be thinking, you know, in the future, because
Yeah.
we're gonna, we're gonna do this. I mean, that's just what it is.
Absolutely, we are.
And, um...
Interest rates are, can't be this low forever.
And we have not, um, and that's also gonna, that's also gonna deal with work too, you know what I mean? When interest, interest rates are really low, so you're going to have a lot, you know, when they...
Yeah.
Like what we've talked about before, you know, na, national average, you know, over the years, you know, seven percent. I can remember as a kid, sixteen, seventeen percent, you know. You know, it's my mom and I was like, oh my goodness, you know, when I tell my kids that, they're like, really? I'm like, yeah, really, it was bad.
I think our first house was nine percent.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we, we have to be thinking about that, um, and, uh, and I would, we haven't met with, um, HR yet. But, um, something that I do think that we need to look at overall is how, what is a baseline? And then, you know, how do we do that for, you know, years or, you know, experience? I don't know. I don't, I don't wanna speak for her, so I wanna bring Elise onto that.
From the, for the different...
And we can also look at some studies, I mean, you know, I think that that's imperative, so then you have a, a better, um, you know, we have a better understanding and, and department heads and as electeds have a better understanding, so, okay.
I appreciate that.
All right, well, we appreciate it. That's all, that's all I have.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. That wasn't bad. Good thing you came, Remy.
All right, we're gonna take just a few minutes break, Danny, okay?
Hey, sounds good.
Okay.
Did you hear me?
We heard you.
Yeah, I heard you.
Okay, we're reconvening, February third.
Very good, we are back in session. Uh, Danny, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, I can.
All right, thank you, thank you. Uh, we're here with, uh, Steve Edwards, Marion County Conservation Director, to go over the conservation budget for the upcoming fiscal year. So Steve, I'll turn it over to you. We've got some packets here and you're gonna walk us through it.
Yep, I appreciate the, uh, opportunity to come before you and talk about the budget. Um, on the first page, I, I wanna recap the COVID-nineteen effects on, um, revenue for the year that just ended here, nineteen, two thousand nineteen and twenty. I know you had this in your annual report that I submitted, but it, it's kind of interesting when you look at it because we've had so many negative effects with COVID. It's kinda nice to see maybe one positive in there somewhere. Um, so, you know, back, we were closed from April third is when we normally would open till the fifteenth of May in two thousand twenty, as per the governor's order. But if you look at the sheet, what I estimated for camping at Roberts Creek was a hundred and fifty-one thousand. We took in actually two hundred and three thousand, one oh two, moved down to the county park. I estimated a hundred and twenty thousand. We took in a hundred and forty-two, five sixty-six. So, and you can see the, the other amounts there. But in general, it was nice, COVID didn't shut us down. Actually, it tells me that recreation and tourism in Marion County is strong. Um, and we ended up actually generating almost seventy-five thousand dollars more just in camping than, than I anticipated it would, that went back to the general base, which, you know, again, I, I wanna start out on a positive note, you know, that as bad as COVID has been for a lot of businesses and things that for, for ours, it, it, it hasn't really affected us that much. If anything, it's probably been the other way because people were so tied up and, you know, couldn't get out and do stuff. And when they could, boom, they, they were out in droves. So, um, but anyway, I just wanna start off with that.
Steve, Steve, cheers to you and your staff.
Yeah, thank you.
I know, I know that that kind of increase means that much more work.
Absolutely.
And you guys, your, your group just, uh, gave our folks and residents from other counties a place to go. So we really appreciate your work.
Thanks, I appreciate that. On the, uh, the financial breakdown, and this is, I'm using the same format I use all the time. So, um, the total budget request was one million, five hundred and thirteen thousand, eight oh six. And if we break that down, the conservation department would generate for the budget, uh, camping fees, shelter fees, pavilion fees of three hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Um, we estimate twenty-two thousand dollars for online reservation fees. Then we also would put in two hundred thousand from the conservation reserve account and we would collect an additional seventy-five hundred for state, uh, excise tax for the cabins. So our total revenue, uh, that we would put into that budget asking is five hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. So to break that down further, the O-one fund would be eight hundred and two thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars. The O-two fund would be a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars. So the total tax asking would be nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars, which is roughly sixty-four percent of the budget request. We would generate the other thirty, uh, six percent of the budget. So that's your total budget again of one million, five hundred and thirteen thousand, eight oh six, um, which is an increase from last year of about seventy-five thousand, but we're upping our revenue by forty-three thousand, or about sixty percent. So, um, budget-wise, as far as wages, I plugged in three percent, which everybody's kinda doing. We did the ten percent for the health. Um, and then for health insurance, I just budget actual numbers, kinda like Jake does. And so if you have a single, you have a single. If you have a family, you have a family. And I use the actual, uh, money that was taken out. So however Jake, I guess they call that actual.
Yep.
So I use that number.
Yep.
So, um, that's good. Uh, any questions on that?
No, nothing on that, Steve.
Um...
Steve, Keisha?
No, that's, no, very, so, great job.
So if we go to the, uh, major categories for budget, basically this year we've got three. Um, and you've seen this one before where we started, uh, on the Cordova Park Office and Classroom Facility in two thousand nineteen to get clearances from the Corps of Engineers, go through budgeting processes and, and the first thing we had to do was get rid of our nineteen seventy shops. We were kind of in the same boat. Tyler was no room, hard to do anything. So those had to be removed. We got that done at Cordova. I got the new one built. Um, we sold the house there at Cordova that had, is actually is gonna be moved on the eleventh of this month. So we're trying to get a clean state slate, I'm sorry. Yeah, um, we've had some delays with weather and whatnot. It was supposed to be, uh, last fall removed and one thing led to another and it didn't happen. So that has put, pushed our project back considerably. And we had half of that budgeted for this fiscal year. That's not gonna happen. At the very soonest, it's gonna be into next year.
Okay.
So, um, we got some, normally we draw the plans up and things, but we decided this time that we're, it's like Chris, it's easier to have somebody else do it, especially on the magnitude. Thank you, Mark, for your suggestion on that. Um, and we got a cost estimate of around seventy-five thousand plus expenses. So I just figured in about seventy-eight thousand. And so I went back and looked. The only other time we've ever used a consulting firm like that is back when we did the Observation Tower.
Okay.
Back in, uh, nineteen ninety-eight to see how that compared. And actually, it's fairly comparable. That project was about four hundred and eighty thousand and the engineering and design was about sixty-five. So, you know, twenty-some years ago, fairly comparable.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, uh, but in order to get that project completed, since we budgeted for this year and it's not gonna be expanded, what I would ask the board is to be able to carry over my balance and any surplus funds that we generate by the end of the year to cover that seventy-eight thousand. So I don't have to use any additional tax, taxation. It would all be covered by, uh, income generation and being able to carry over what we have now to next year to get that done. So I'm, I'm trying not to ask for any more additional dollars than would have already been approved for the budget.
I hear you thought she, he was gonna give us some.
Yeah, right.
Well, hey, I'm, I, I'm not done yet. Further in, don't count me out yet. Um, so this gives you just kind of a general idea of what we envision for the office classroom.
Okay.
And the, for the classroom, what we'd like to do is expand our environmental education program. Marla does a really good job of going to the places, but we don't have anywhere for people to come to us, uh, and be able to put on a program. So if we can get them to Cordova, we can use the tower, we can use the trails, we can use the lake, we can use, um, Roberts Creek for canoeing, we can use a lot of different things and use that classroom as the hub to basically come out from, from there and use those areas. Again, if they have to come from town, it makes it real difficult for people to do that. So we think we can activate that and, you know, we, we, we like to generate income. We like to promote tourism and recreation in Marion County and make it a quality of life issue for companies and factories that are hiring people. What are they gonna do when they're not working? You know, that's one of the questions that people get a lot. Okay, I got a job. But when I'm not working, what is there on to do? So we're that agency of the county that, kinda like Carla, we're trying to get people here and they give them something to do once they get here. So that's, we're looking at as also an economic generator.
The footprint of this, Steve, is that viewing area, is that overlooked the lake then?
That would actually look to the north.
To the north.
Yeah, we, we've got a bunch of evergreens there. And what we're envisioning there is having like a bunch of, um, feeders out there where people that are coming and waiting can sit there with a, a big open area to watch the birds and different feeders and things like that.
Right.
So, um, that, that's kinda what we envision. We just don't have, we'd like to turn it the other way and get over the lake, but we, yeah, we just can't. So, but.
And there's no room down where you currently have, yeah, there's no.
Well, I, you know, back in, so what, twenty years ago, we had the Cordova Sound and Rock Project, which I think I mentioned that, the, the meeting or something. But, um, it overlooked the lake and, but it, it became such a monster project of seventy million dollars that became undoable. Um, this is actually doable and you're gonna get something done for it. And, uh, you know, we'd have to get core approval for a bunch of stuff and, and maybe down the road as a rental facility. You know, that was the original intent, was for like weddings and things like that that overlooked the lake. That probably needs to be separate than, than a, than an office-type project. So, but, um, but yeah, like I say, if, if we can carry over the fund balance and the additional, then we know we can get this completed. So, um, that.
So you, you, it's a classroom slash boardroom, so your board be meeting there?
Yeah, yeah. Um, the second major project would be, uh, road renovation on the west campground at Roberts Creek. If you remember last year, one of the projects was to convert thirty-nine, just thirty amp electric sites into twenty-five full-service sites. You can actually generate more income with twenty-five full-service sites than you can with thirty-nine, thirty amp sites considerably. So, um, this last, uh, fall, we, staff went in there and we basically converted those to full service. But the roads haven't been done since nineteen eighty-three. Those are original seal coat asphalt roads. Sure Steve knows that they aren't supposed to last that long. And once we drove our excavators and stuff over, it, it didn't help at all.
Broken.
So the red section is the, is the section that we're talking about. And I did, and Tyler was good enough to come out and give us an estimate a year ago, um, with his expertise. And he recommended to basically mill the old existing road and use that as a base and then cover that with forages of asphalt. So he gave us a cost at that time. He, he was good enough to get to my, my Nats and they gave us a cost. But a year ago, so I just added five percent to it. I don't know if that'll cover it up. So that's how I come up with the three hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Uh, again, I appreciate Tyler coming out and looking at it and giving us an estimate on that. Um, the, the problem we run into and we always do is when do you do a project like that? Ideally, again, it would be nice to do it in the spring and get it done. The problem is, once you start it, you can't get people in and out of the campground. And so we found that usually in the fall, once we close, that's the best time to do it. But the window of opportunity is usually the very end of October to the, midway through November. Cause we don't close till the last Sunday of October. So occasionally we have to close a little bit early to get a major project done. Um, we close right after Labor Day to get the sewer, the full-service sites back online. So that's a month and a half that we had to shut down early, almost two months.
Yeah.
You know, so you, you also have an additional lost revenue there because you're shut down on that first half.
Sure.
So, anyway, um, we're a little, looking at that for probably next fall. And I, I just, I put the, I'm picture guys, you guys know, um, to give you an idea what the roads look like and, and that makes them look pretty good, because they're not that good, um, with the cracks and whatnot. And you can see where they've, um, the heavy equipment has kinda got over before and basically crushed them.
Right.
So that's probably our, our second major one. Um, again, within, with increased income comes increased work. And so we're, we're asking for some clerical people. We haven't had a, a new employee in twenty years. And what I'm estimating that to be is about sixty-eight thousand. That includes salary hikers like a health insurance and all the office supplies. And I just listed some of the duties and again, I know that's an HR-type question, but, um, just some of the things that we'd like to do. And then our main focus is customer service. And we'd like to have a central number for the conservation department with extensions out to staff. This person would respond to all the phone calls and emails and e-commerce website, um, and the direct walk-in, uh, inquiries from the public. It'd be a central distribution point for all information sent out. It would also, um, increase the timely response to the public. And one of the other things it would do is right now our rangers spend between an hour and a half and two hours every day returning phone calls, emails, and checking the website to make sure there's not double bookings. So you get three guys, four guys doing that for almost two hours a day. That's a day. That means that they're not doing things in the park that, that basically only they can do. So, um, but also, uh, sort and print reservation receipts that are posted by the rangers, tabulate and submit the monthly online reservation report to me, maintain and then update the department's e-commerce website, which takes a lot of time to do that. And if we get a new county website, they would be helpful on that. Um, we have a number of permits and rental agreements that we, uh, have for equipment that we run out to the public. A lot of times, staff code has to go in on Saturday and Sunday to do that. The same thing with check back in, like planters, they check them out on a Saturday, they check them back on a Sunday. So we have to have people go in and do that because we don't have anybody there a lot of times during the week, during office hours, because we don't have office staff.
Right.
Um, again, central point of contact or checkout for departmental planning equipment, controlled burn equipment, canoes, things like that to the public. They would order and request park, uh, materials and invoices, help with, with brochures and presentations.
Well, Steve, would this person's hours be, how would?
They would vary.
Okay.
What we do is have, uh, like in the summertime, they would probably be available, uh, possibly on Saturday morning. A lot of times we ask people to call ahead. If you're gonna check out a canoe or you need the planter equipment, call and set up an appointment with us. If it's Saturday, okay, as long as we know you're coming, we can do that. But like now, it's the ranger that works the weekend.
This, this person's gonna have to be fairly flexible as far as.
You're right, yeah.
Okay.
Cause right now we're having the ranger do all that on the weekend. And that, that takes away from him controlling. So if an electric box goes down, he's fixing that, he's checking out cabins and he's doing the patrol. So it gets to be a lot for him, so, um.
Do you think in the summertime though? I mean, I mean, summertime busy, but in the wintertime, what would you?
We're as busy in the wintertime with this type of stuff as we are in the summertime. And I'm gonna get to that.
Okay.
Um, as we turn the page, I like to give a little, uh, history of things. So let's talk again back on the income. Back in, uh, FY two thousand one, two thousand two, we generated a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. That froze from cabins and camping. Again, I mentioned before, that's the last time we've had a full-time staff increase. That's twenty years ago. So let's fast forward to, uh, the last fiscal year, we just finished it, two thousand nineteen and twenty. We increased that amount by three hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars, or two hundred and fifty percent in twenty years. So we add the one twenty-nine and the three twenty-nine, that's a two hundred and fifty percent increase. Um, so again, let's, let's compress that a little bit. Let's go to FY thirteen, fourteen. Camping and cabins, we generated three hundred and thirty-three thousand, four seventy-six. Go, fast forward six years, now we're generating four hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and two. That's with camping and cabins. That is include the pavilion or shelters or other canoe rentals, things like that. So that's an increase of almost a hundred and twenty thousand, or just shy of thirty-six percent. So our numbers keep ticking up. So now I'm gonna give you revenue for the current fiscal year through the end of January. I estimated that we would take in for camping, two hundred and seventy-one thousand. We're currently at three hundred and twenty-three thousand, six twenty-seven. We're still in a pandemic. And so we're at a hundred and twenty percent, or we've already increased, we've already generated fifty-two thousand more than I had figured we'd take in this whole year. And we got five months to go. Um, cabins, I estimated a hundred and seventeen thousand. We're a hundred and twelve, three ninety-three, or ninety-six percent. So I guess my point is, we're gonna be way over that when it's all said and done. So to your point earlier, I think we can still get those projects done and still give you money back. So, um, if you look at online revenue.
I'm more concerned with getting your project done.
Well, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Um, online revenue, this is, there's forty-five counties on online. Pope, all the big ones, Pope, Story, all those are on there. In two thousand fifteen, sixteen, we took in two hundred and sixty-eight, a little over two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. That was two thousand, one hundred and fifty-three individual reservations, which ranked first in the state. So you can go through and see, last year we got bumped to second because Adams County came online with ten new count, ten new cabins. So I'd like ten new cabins because they don't like being second. So anyway, but you can see the increase.
I don't like being second either. How do we, how do we do this?
I need new cabins. And we're cabins. I can fill them up.
Charge more.
But, but they got ten more than I got.
Charged ten more.
Well.
I told, I told you, I think you're pricing these cheap, Steve.
I guess.
What do they have besides cabins? What, what is their draw?
They have Lake, Lake Icaria.
Icaria, okay.
Yeah. And that's a big, they got a marina and they got a bunch of stuff in Icaria. And that's their main, main driver. But if you look at, just look at the reservations from two thousand fifteen, sixteen to nineteen twenty. You got two thousand, one fifty-six. Now we're at two thousand, eight seventy-three. That's an increase of seven hundred and twenty individual reservations for a hundred and twenty-five percent in six years.
Yeah.
So again, getting back to more income equals more work for the staff. Um, and I, and I'm, I'm kinda like Chris said earlier in his presentations, I've got staff that are willing to go that extra mile and not complain about it. It just gets to be a, a really long season for them and then it never stops in the wintertime. Um, so let me just give you a, a quick state comparison. We manage about three thousand, three hundred and forty-eight acres. State average is one thousand, seven ninety-one. Roberts Creek's the seventh largest county park and Cordova's the tenth largest. Our budget is one million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four seventy-six. Statewide average is eight hundred and thirty-two thousand and change. For income generation for your budget, this current fiscal year is by, about a half a million for us, which ranks eighth in the state of Iowa. The average is about two hundred and two thousand. Property tax support, we're nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, roughly. That ranks fifteenth in the state. The average is about six hundred and forty-seven thousand, give or take. Those are general numbers. So I did a little research on the number of full-time staff the county depart, county conservation departments have. So I started at five hundred thousand. So if you go from five hundred thousand to seven fifty, there's twenty-five conservation departments that are in that category. Their average, uh, full-time staff is six and they generate about a hundred and forty-four thousand. If you go down from seven fifty to a million, they average eight staff and about two hundred thousand in income. If you go to a million to about a million three, you got four boards. You got an average of nine staff and they generate about two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So if you turn the page, this is where we fall, budgets between one million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand and one million, six hundred and ninety-five thousand. There's five conservation departments there. Statewide average for full-time staff for them is ten. They generate about three hundred and twenty-five thousand. So we fall into this category. And you can see our budget. We have six full-time staff and we generate four hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight. And then the last one is one, one point seven million to two point three million. And they have an average of fifteen staff members and they generate about four hundred and seventy-three. So I guess my point there is that we're not top-heavy with staff. Um, the Corps of Engineers estimates visitors of Roberts Creek and Cordova at about four hundred and thirty-two thousand for a calendar year. Um, so that is.
Why do they get those estimates?
They use a car counter. Most time they've got a formula that they use. We used to have a car counter at Marion County Park back in nineteen eighty-six. And we generated over a hundred thousand cars in eighty-six. Now I don't know what that would be now, but, and I don't know what the, exactly the formula they use. Probably like three point one two five or something for people instead of like three. So I, I'm not sure on that.
Right.
Um, but that's, um, that's kinda where we're at as far as staffing goes. And then normally we, we try to update at least one piece of equipment every year. Uh, when COVID hit, I backed that off and we did not do that because I didn't know, um, as far as funding where you folks may have to cut back on budgets. So we tried to be proactive instead of reactive to it. Uh, along with that, we cut two summer staff back because we didn't know, just like you guys, we didn't know what was gonna happen. So we were trying to save some funds back for that. So we're trying to get somewhat caught up on that. So, um, but those are the main projects that we'd, we'd like to get done. Any questions on the main ones?
Well, I guess from my perspective, Steve, again, an excellent job in organizing the information. So you, I, I guess you and I have talked about this for years. I totally agree with staff hire. I think you cover it with revenue. I know you do pricing models. I tease you about pricing and we argue about, about, about that. But I know you guys do stay on top of what we're priced relative to other recreational areas. So they can do a good job of that. And there is a stewardship issue here as well. When you think about one of our primary attractions is our, our county facilities that we have, county park, things that we've got going on at the lake and the other places. And your staff has done, I think, an outstanding job with that. So totally on board with staff, what you need, um, because I think you'll cover it with revenue. But I, I think even by adding a part-time member for this, uh, administrative staff, I think that's an excellent idea. Your rangers should be out with the public, not doing that work. Um, so I think that's, I think you're spot on with where you need to be.
I, I, you know, and I, and I think you, you make a very valid point, Steve. If we're serious about growth in Marion County.
I'm just going with this.
Housing, uh. Housing, uh, uh, jobs, you're right, what are they doing and not working? I mean, you make a valid point. Can't argue that.
Have you thought about taking, putting a model together similar to like what Ty- Tyler does? Taking some of this and reinvesting it back into more cabins and what it would be?
Yeah, actually Mark and I have had some conversations with that and, um, yeah, in, in that, yeah, yes, yeah, and, and, uh.
I mean, that, uh, yeah, would it be nice to be able to give back to the general fund? Yes, I agree. But if we can do something of a stair step and putting so much away, so, because ultimately, I mean, you know, if there's opportunity there and we can grow.
I think it's great if he can fund his own, I mean, you know.
Well, uh, well, Mark's had some great, we've had some really good conversations and we need to have more of those, more, you know, talking about, you know, profit loss and then, and and how do we do that? So yeah, Mark's got spot on on some of those ideas and I appreciate your comments on that.
Yeah, cause I, yeah, I, I had no idea you guys had this conversation. But you just, I mean, I'm looking at this and I'm like, a goal of mine has been, how can we tap that? We have so much, you know, that, like Tyler even said with roads, you know, we, we, we lack, because we have a body of water, but we need to, um, entertain with that, what can we do with it?
Yeah, we need to turn that to our advantage.
Yeah, like I always said, there's ninety-six other counties that would love to have Lake Red Rock out there. Because of the, uh, direct and indirect, you know, dollars that come in because of that, big body of water sitting out there. And to, to be able to maximize that is something that, yeah, would be a, a good conversation to have looking five years, ten years down the road, you know, obviously some of us won't be here, but, I mean, to, to set that stage.
Yeah, your knowledge is so, I mean, it's, it's so worthy, I mean, that if you could give somebody a plan for the future and even us as boards, I mean, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be, I'd be glad to sit down and have that conversation, you know, with you as far as, cause there's, there's a lot of potential there that's untapped. Um, you know, we see it in, in cabin rentals where people can't get them because of book. You know, same thing with, with camp signs, they, they can't get them because of their book, right?
Is it usually people that's not local or is it a mix or what is it?
If you, if you were to stick a pin in Marion County, the center of Marion County and draw a, a zone of influence around it, we go out probably two hours. And we get a lot of Des Moines, we get a lot of Ames area people, we get a lot of.
More of a metropolitan group than, I mean, like I'm Tracy, I'm probably not gonna rent a cabin. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, 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 it's, yeah.
You cracked me up, Steve. No, I understand.
No, but if you were to take and ask how many out-of-county people use the facilities, I would say probably seventy percent are out of Marion County coming from Des Moines.
From a metropolitan.
Yeah, somewhere outside of the county, whatever that is. Now nationals is a completely different animal, obviously, where everybody, you know, is from out of wherever. So, but, um, yeah, I mean.
That's interesting.
Yeah, at least.
I figured that's probably the case.
Cause we did that study and it's been a number of years ago and I think it was like seventy-two percent, seventy-three percent were out of county. Coming in, then we also had a, a matrix on the amount of, the average stay was like five days, five point five or whatever.
They were making a vacation out of that.
Yeah, it was like a, short, just short of a week. And that's normally what you see, a lot of these campers that come in, they'll stay at least a week. You know, and a lot, some of them will push that fourteen-day limit. And normally what we do is we just have you move fourteen days. You know, we're not gonna kick you out of the park to do that, but we gotta maintain those sites or, you know, clean them, that type of stuff, so. But yeah, um, so, um, projects based on funding levels, just that there's any money left after we get done with that. These are things that, you know, we would like to accomplish. Um, and, and a lot of this has to do with like the cabins. If you maintain those cabins and make them look nice.
That's what's gonna.
People will treat them and we have a lot of repeat business. That's one of the reasons new people can't get in. Is because a lot of people will book like Fourth of July and then they've got the system where they know I can book it as soon as, I can book it at the same time next year, right now, cause you can book it two years out. And they'll book it this year and they'll book it next year. And then when they come in, they'll book it the next year. So new people are like, well, it's always booked. Yeah, it's, it's, cause it's online. And we don't have control of that, which is good, because now it, it puts it on you to just go ahead and get online and then do it. And so, um, but, you know, again, those were, those three bedrooms were built in two thousand and one, those, that's all original countertops in there. The stoves are original in there. So we're trying to upgrade those, so when you come in, it's something new, something different. And I think you have to do that to keep people coming back.
No different than your home.
Exactly right, that's exactly right, Keisha.
You gotta keep up on it, I get that.
Um, so these pictures aren't maybe the best, but the, the countertops are getting bad. Um, number two is, is we have a, on the three-bedroom cabins, there's an upstairs bedroom. The only complaint we ever had.
Is the not having.
The noise.
Yep.
Is because people can't shut the door when people are still up. They can hear the TV, they can hear the food bomb, because that's open there. That's the one, that's the only complaint we ever.
Cause I've stayed in both, I mean, I've stayed in all of them. We, and that's funny you say that, Steve, but I mean, it's, it's, it's interesting because we is, that's what we did, we, for Thanksgiving, we'd go there and we'd all stay together and stay in the cabins and and stayed in the small one and then the bigger one, but you're right.
So what's the, what's the, how's the plan to enclose it?
Well, you could just, if you look at that second picture up here, you can just run the wall up and run a ceiling over the top of it. Probably the hardest thing to do is make sure you have a heat duct in there, but we can access that from the floor and run, cause it's right under the mechanical. So you can heat, you can run that heat duct in there, then you'd have your AC and heat.
Or you could go downtown and be quiet.
I guess that depends on how big they are, you know.
They're probably with you.
Well, yeah, yeah.
And, and I think it would help maybe alleviate some of the echoing too, that you.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, because that's the other thing to say is, especially it seems like when there's kids down there running around.
Yep.
Which, you know, that's part of the deal. So, um, number three is again, we like, um, full-service sites, cause they pay back. And this is the outer loop at the county park, there's twenty-four sites there that have, um, water and fifty amp electric, but we didn't put sewer in there back in two thousand and nine when we worked on it. But we've had a lot of people say, boy, you know, I use those facilities all the time, but they don't have sewer. So those actually pay back off in about four to five years by occupancy. Because everybody wants a full-service site and they'll pay extra for it, so, um.
Look, Steve, let me, how much of this are you, are you hiring all this done? Is this all estimates of that? Are you guys doing some of it? What's?
We do some of it, the sewer, we don't touch, we need to make sure everything runs in the right direction, so we hire that done.
Okay.
Um.
But like even on this, when you're doing these walls, you know, kinda is that?
Yeah, some of what we would do, our biggest thing is time.
Right.
And the other problem we run with the cabins is occupancy, because we actually have to block out dates to be able to do any work in there, because they're, like in, right now in the wintertime, all the weekends are basically booked. We have people that can't get in the weekend, so they'll come, older folks, usually retired folks, like Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, cause they know they gotta leave on Friday, cause the new group's coming in. So that's our other issue is our window of opportunity to get the stuff done. We can do it, but it takes us twice as long as a carpenter to come in and, and knock it out. So some of what we would do, some of what we'd hire done. So we try to do what we can, because we try to stretch those dollars as best we can. Uh, siding of the three-bedroom cabins, um, it's hardy plank, which is concrete board. Again, after twenty years, it starts to deteriorate to some degree. And what we'd like to do is make those more rustic, more of a log cabin type look to the outside of them. Um, so.
That hold up?
Will the log cabin stuff hold up?
Yeah, do you have to stain that?
Um, you can treat it the first time and then you're okay. It depends on the kind of material that you're using. Same thing like with the office, we talked about earlier at Cordova, what I'd like to see is maybe thirty-six inches up of stone, like a wainscot. And then log cabin siding up and then to be a steel roof, but make it blend into the environment that we're in. Instead of just a metal building sitting there. It was, metal buildings are okay with your shop, but when you're trying to invite people in, kids and, and groups and things like that, you want something that looks the part, quite honestly, so.
I mean, this, these look okay, meaning like when you're there, I mean, I don't have a problem, and it has for twenty years. Um, yeah, my only concern would be whether you're sealing, you know what I mean? If you're sealing it, you know what I mean? You have to come back every five years and seal it and if that's.
And that's a good point, cause we've had that issue with the two-bedroom cabins, they're supposed to be sealed every three to four years. And i- it's hard, you can't find somebody to do it. And then again, we have to do it either right in that spring area, cause you can't do it in the wintertime, and the summer's booked, you can't do anything. Then so you got about a three-week window to get all those sealed up, as best you can, along with everything else you gotta do when we open up in the spring. So, yeah, it is a problem, so you wanna get a product that you don't have to seal all the time if you can.
Right.
So maintenance, we're trying to reduce maintenance costs on that stuff. Um, number five is basically, it's just an example of an open-faced, um, storage building. A lot of our equipment sits outside, mowers, tractors, things, we don't have any place to put them. So we'd like to get them under roof, doesn't have to be completely enclosed, but we'd like to get them out of the elements.
Do you think this price, this estimate is good? I mean, I don't know when you got it, but it's, what are we looking at for increases?
I got it about a year ago.
Okay, you may wanna, we're gonna have to watch, you wouldn't know, you're gonna have to watch that. I mean, we're gonna have to probably, you're probably gonna wanna get an estimate again, because of. I'm hoping some of it will come back down, but I mean, you know, with wood prices and steel prices being what they are, I mean.
And that's why we're kinda hoping that by this delay with the office, those prices will, will come back down.
Level back off, okay.
Yeah, cause they're, they're getting pretty high now. And then, um, number six is, again, that's a staff thing, what we do is the new east side campground, you know, doesn't have a lot of trees in it right now. So we're gonna need to continue to, to plant trees out there on that east side, um.
Trees are expensive.
Trees are expensive. We can buy a semi-load of forty-five trees and the trees average about two hundred bucks. And that's, um, that's about a three to five inch, um, DBH.
Okay.
Diameter, breast height is what that means. Those are, those are pretty big trees, but there, you gotta buy a semi-load of them. So you can, you can get it for about two hundred bucks a, a shot.
Okay.
So, and that's.
That's probably, well, I mean.
That's usually what we get them out of the bug.
Okay.
We get a semi-load, cause they're so cheap. And you can't find trees like that around here, um, for that kind of, kind of price. You know, Pella, we used to get them up from Pella, but the nursery there, I don't know if it's still in business or not. It, it doesn't do a lot of that type of, uh, nurse.
That side, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, and then I always try to throw some, some future ones in, this is if money falls out of the, the sky.
It's coming. It's coming.
So, okay.
That's what Chuck said, Chuck said it's coming.
It's coming, okay. So these are projects we'll be able to do soon then.
Helicopters on the way.
Oh, great, great. Um, again, equipments, uh, track skid loader, we got a two thousand and eleven, you know, it's, it's gonna be pushing some serious hours pretty soon. And I, I, these are just price estimations on my, my, my part. Uh, we've got tractors that are, you know, two thousand and one, two thousand and two. So we try to update our equipment as best we can. Um, so those will be coming up somewhere down the road. Again, we go back to the cabins, the floors, they take a beating, you know, with the, the public working on them, so you can see how they start to, to get marred. And, um, they probably need to be sanded down and, and refinished. Uh, we staff, we replaced a couple of them in the two-bedrooms, they were bad, so we ended up replacing those, so, um. But yeah, just trying to keep things up, like he said earlier, just trying to, you know, like your house, trying to keep them up. Um, number two is we've got the new trailhead as you go into Cordova, I think you've probably seen it. Um, there's no bathroom there and that's, uh, of course, one of the complaints we had was, hey, we really like the trail, we like the parklot stuff. Love coming down, but when we drive from Adele and we get here, we're looking for a bathroom and we don't see one. So now they said, you know, we know we can go in the park, but then we, you know, everybody's looking for a bathroom when you travel that far. And, and most of the people, you know, we get a lot of Des Moines people coming down to ride the, the trail now, because they'll start at Cordova. Go down below the dam and go up to Pella, and then they'll ride uptown to the bakery, and then they'll come back. I suppose you eat your stuff and then you work it back off on the way, way back, but there's been quite a few people that said, yeah, that's what we do now on, on weekends, we'll come down, cause we go to Pella and get whatever they get and then we can ride back. So, um, down the road, we'd like to put some type of facility in there, so they wouldn't have to, you know, come into the park. But a lot of the people we see now are just riding through the park, once they get there, to warm up and then do the trail. So it's, it's been kind of a different situation out there. I mean, it, there's a lot of people, they just ask, why are you, why are you riding the park? And then you do the truck, we're just warming up. I didn't know you had to warm up before you did a trail ride, but I'm not a viker yet, so I don't know. But anyway, a, a bathroom, we're, we're looking at that. And I just give examples of, the one on page twenty is the one that the staff built.
And your wife, I mean, we could recruit your wife to come in.
No, I don't think you'll ever get my wife to do that again. She, yeah, I don't think so.
She did such a nice job though.
She did, I, I just don't think she'll ever do it again.
Bless her heart.
But, uh, but versus on the next page, you've got the inside of ours and then you've got just a, a prefab concrete one. And you're looking at something at a trailhead that's considerably smaller than that picture is, you know, like, um, one or two stalls, something like that. Um, and then these, uh, number three is the, uh, the south side shower facility there at Roberts Creek. On the new southern loop, we don't have one there, they go up and use the existing one. Um, so we're trying to research that, if, since they're full-service sites, do we need a shower there or we just need a restroom there? For visitors and things like that. So, um, those are things we're still kinda working through, but eventually we're gonna need something down there, I would, I would imagine. Um, and again, I just give you another example on that, on next page, that's a prefab, uh, hubcut, they just bring it in on your slab and they drop it down, you're done in about three days versus, you know, a couple of months to build something. Um, the pavilion, again, you've seen this one from last year, is, is trying to do something, cause we have, uh, I had thirty-four rentals, had thirty-one weddings there. Trying to make it a, a little nicer, you know, and this one, basically, if you had a patio and a fireplace, that would be like a one and a half year payback, cause what you would do is if you're gonna do that, you would up the fee. You know, and, and I calculate if you just double the fee, that's a year and a half payback. If you went from, see, we only charge two fifty, if you went to five, that's a year and a half, that's a year and a half payback. If you went to seven fifty, that's a one-year payback.
I like that.
It's very, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna lie, you are very, very.
It, it is, it's, it's very, very reasonable.
Sure.
The other thing the board tries to do is not price anybody out.
It's a supply and demand.
Yeah, recreational opportunities, we don't wanna do that for them. Um, so, but yeah, that's a very popular site, because it overlooks the light. So, um.
Yeah, we wanna keep it, uh, the way I've always looked at pricing, Steve, and I guess I'll give you my, maybe we, I'm sure we've talked about this over the years. We want our pricing to not price anybody out who wants to avail themselves of some great uh, public works projects, and that's what you guys have done, whether it's the, whether it's county park or out there. At the same time, we want to not put the full pricing burden on the Marri- Marion County taxpayer. Because we've got so many people coming from other counties to use these locations. How do we, how do we do that to ensure that our taxpayer, I mean, you generate revenue, that's very clear in your presentation. So it's very clear these things do generate some level of income that we can cover some of the costs. But how do we, how do we ensure that our taxpayers, who are already with property taxes being what they are, the other demands that are on that property tax dollar, schools, things that school districts are doing, things that we're doing with the VA, how do we ensure that they're not subsidizing people coming from other cities and counties using Marion County facilities? That's really the pricing dilemma you face. And if we're about seventy, you said about seventy, thirty, out of county versus in county. Um, that would be, that would be the pricing issue for me, is how do we make sure that we certainly want people from other counties coming and they're more than welcome to come and, and use these. We want that, we want them going to the businesses, that type of thing. But how do we, how do we make sure that our taxpayers aren't paying for something really twice? They pay for it, but then they also have to pay because these people aren't paying enough to use it, you see what I'm saying?
Yep, yep.
So.
Trying to find that balance in there, yep, yep, yep.
Well, can't you have a special rate for any county residents? Would that be, would that be opening up a can of worms?
We, we, we've talked about this.
Moving on to REAP. The REAP funds are, are the state funds that we receive from the gaming. Here in Iowa, and uh, what we've kinda earmarked for some of that money is continue to do concrete paths. At, at some of the parks, Roberts Creek and, and the county park, cause that, that's what people like, again, you, you can charge more for them. Um, the number two, these are nineteen seventy rec restrooms, which. Again, I show the inside versus again, what, what we'd rather see is, you know, they get a lot of use, never done much to them. Um, they're kind of slightly inside, but it's one of those deals where you hate to invest very much into them, because they're not that good throughout.
And they stink.
So, and they, that, I hate that.
They do, they do stink, there's, there's.
And to pull everything out and put the new, new guts in them.
It's the truth, I just.
Yeah, and that's.
You hold your breath as though, yeah.
And that's not what we want, not here in this county, that's not the way we do it. So, again, we inherited those back in, from nineteen seventy when we took the place over, so, those are things that we'd like to upgrade and, and, and get rid of those. So, um, that in a nutshell is, is kind of what, what I'm proposing. And I know that one of the questions, cause I uh, said it on some of these, it, that you've asked them is. If you had a downturn, and if, you know, you had to reduce budgets, what, what would you do? And I guess, you know, what we, what I would do is, is look at our operation and try to prioritize. The entire operation with things that have the least amount of negative impact on the public. So, for instance, in the winter time, we would reduce snow removal. We would identify the roads that need to be cleared, cabin roads. But the rest of them, we would probably just close, like the county park, now you can go down around the lake, we close that off. Cause that's time and that's fuel to do that, so we would reduce those, we wouldn't do, uh, say like the Cordova there in the uh, Bolt Swing Trail over by Pella. That section, we, we, cause that takes time and fuel, the park lots, we wouldn't do those, you know. So in the winter time, there'd be a, the least amount of effect on, on people, you know. But we could save dollars by not doing that in ti- in time.
Yeah.
So, um, that would be one thing, I think, that, that I would work on, but I'd like to, again, try to keep the negative. Effect as much as possible down to the public. The other thing, like in the summer, reduce mowing, we mow forty hours a week, we're mowing all the time, so maybe you're mowing every other. Week, perhaps gets a little longer, people complain, yeah, they did, but if it's a cost savings issue.
Right.
There are a number of things you can do that might not necessarily look good.
Right.
But you might have to do that.
Well, if we get, if we get to that point, Steve, the people that are using the facilities might be in that same boat too, so that usage may go down also.
Well, 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 I guess I would say it this way, and you guys tell me if I'm off base here. In a, and again, we're talking about the future.
Right.
And trying to predict.
Yep.
What might happen.
Sure.
Because as a board and for you and the other department heads, it's responsible to not just think, hey, it's always gonna go up. We're always going to have more, we're always going to have more money. Now, maybe in today's mo- modern monetary theory world, we will, I don't know. It seems like if I just turn on the press, I can have as much money as I want, that's not real economics, though. And if we get a situation where it does go down, I would prioritize your department, Steve. As an area, I would want to put money towards keep open.
It surprised me on like COVID.
COVID is our less, COVID's our lesson, right? We had a, we had a major global pandemic, impacted us in various ways, and you saw an increase in usage. In our, in those facilities, because people will want someplace to go. And if you've got less money, less resources, or some kind of economic change. We have the perfect place to have, you can at least get outside, you can at least go someplace and unwind and enjoy yourself and see the. The outdoors, so, so I appreciate you thinking about that, and, and we certainly would wanna talk about that, but. I would actually prioritize your department as a department we want to keep open.
I appreciate that thought.
Because people, our, I think our public would need that, those to go, um, I think that's important, so.
I appreciate that.
Any, any other questions for Steve?
Think on what we talked about.
I'm sorry?
Think about what, what we talked about, I do think that that, you know, a future plan, um. I'm kind of a.
You're thinking kind of a, a, a se- a succession plan?
Yeah, and also.
Something like that, something that Steve could pass on.
Pass on, but also, you know, if there, a plan of where you could maybe, you know, do more cabins. And how, you know, reinvest some of that money and take a portion of it to reinvest to, to do, you know, more of that, you know, and what that looks like.
Steve told me he's gonna do this ten more years.
But.
I'll talk with Nikki, I'm sure.
Wait a minute, maybe you know something I don't know. We, in, in. It is imperative that we do have, um, a succession plan is very so important. I mean, heaven forbid, but you know, we, we don't want to, we don't wanna lose your knowledge, you know? And so if you could put some of that down, I mean, you do this and that's, you know, excellent, but if there is some things that, for the future, you know? That you could put down, that would be wonderful.
Stuff that I think would um, would be, I hate to keep harping on income generation. But I mean, it, it's one of those things, uh, fact of nature, I guess, really, that there's, there's some things I think that the county is short on that can do that. That the county could provide and uh, not be a uh monetary drain on the county. So as you move forward, whether you have the ebb and flows, that it's, it's, it's kind of an even keel.
Right.
Something of that, of that nature.
Well, I think that'd be excellent, Steve, because we definitely, you and I have talked about this over the years, we wanna apply resources to this. Um, and um. Make the, with, to be the best steward of what we have, we need to apply some thought, some dollars and some planning. To make it the best for our residents, and it really comes down to that, so we'll look for your expertise to help us get there.
Appreciate that, thank you. Thanks for letting me come in.
You bet.
No, thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks. All right.
Thanks for being on time.
Yeah, lunch, is it lunchtime?
We're gonna do lunch, Danny, we'll just mute. We'll mute and shut off the camera, and then we'll come back, I think one-ish, I think it is.
A motion for recess, is there a motion for recess?
It's motion to recess.
Second.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
We'll see you back at one o'clock?
Yes, thank you, Danny.
Okay, yep, thanks.
It's Jake.
Sorry. It's Jake this time.
Jake, and not Jake from Star, not Jake from St. Farm.
I knew you guys could, I knew you couldn't resist.
You guys have got the khakis on, right Jake?
Absolutely, the same ones, same, same two pair.
Okay, reconvene February third?
Well, this gets out of control, Keisha. All right, we are reconvening with our budget meeting. Uh, it, I guess we put a motion to recess, is there a motion to re-reconvene?
Re-reconvene, yes, I'm so moved.
Second.
Uh, McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
Very good, we have Kim Dorn, Director of Marion County Public Health here, so uh, Kim, welcome. Glad you could be here, you've had a very uneventful year. There's been absolutely nothing going on in public health.
Nothing.
Absolutely nothing, I don't know, I really don't know what we're gonna talk about, to be honest.
Right.
Cause there's nothing going on even now, going into twenty twenty-one, there's nothing happening either, right?
Nope, I'm twiddling my thumbs, I'm, I'm sitting over there.
I met her at the door and said, oh, we, we're not having it today, and she's like, what?
First, first off, before we get into the numbers again, uh, it's a chance for me publicly to thank you. And your staff for everything that uh you've done during this COVID situation. Um, since March, was it March or February when we started being in here?
It was like the end of February, I think.
End of February, for almost a month and a half, you and I and Jeff Anderson met in here, and Emily. Till ten o'clock at night.
Yes.
Figuring out what was gonna go on with this thing, what we had to do, how we were gonna communicate. So, anyway, my thanks to you, your staff has done lights out work coordinating this and.
They have been amazing.
Yeah.
They have been.
It has been, uh, through all of the ambiguity, the uncertainty from state and federal government edicts. Trying to help our residents stay safe and, and get through this, so again. My, my thanks to you and your uh for that. So, let's uh, let's talk budget.
All right.
Uh, of course, that doesn't mean you're gonna give me money. I'll give you all these compliments, Kim, but after that, you know, now we're.
It's all right, it's, um, it's all good.
Steve's the softy here, he'll give you whatever you want, whatever you want, just ask.
That's awesome, thanks Steve.
I'll ask him.
Oh, different Steve, sorry.
Rent payments.
Rent payments, okay, are we, are we on department twenty-three?
Yes.
Yes, okay, let me, can I start, can I start by saying something has changed already, since, since I put this together?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, when we put, when I put this together, um, the, this. Plan from the state was that we would become part of a new service area. For WIC and maternal child health, and that, that they were going to define the um boundaries for those programs.
Okay.
Which would have increased our WIC program from four counties to nine counties. And that's, that nine counties is reflected in here.
Okay.
Well, since then, since then, they decided, you know what, COVID is just too much, we're not even gonna make them do an application for WIC this year. Not, let alone, it's not gonna be a competitive year, and so, where everything is going to be um. The same as it is this year for WIC, and so, what the budget piece that I put in to support those. The increase in WIC was an additional eight hundred thousand dollars into revenue and expense. Because it's a grant thing and it's flow through.
Yep.
And so, the increase in rents are reflected, and is part of that, so. So because they're not gonna do that, eight hundred thou- or because they're not doing, and the, the eight hundred thousand was kind of a shot in the dark.
Yeah.
We had no idea exactly how much money that would be. And so, um, what I need to do is go back and take that out of here.
Eighty, not eight hundred, right, eighty thousand?
Eight hundred thousand.
Okay.
And there's an eight hundred thousand dollar difference.
Oh, difference.
Yeah, in, in between what, what I planned for in this and what um I expect will actually happen since they.
Subtract that out.
So we're gonna take that out, we'll take that out of um the line items that we put it in, because we put it in um contract services, we put it in rent payments.
IT, did you put in IT too?
We, we did put some in IT.
True.
Because if we were going to do that, we would need to provide.
Yep.
Um, computers for subcontractors.
All right.
So we'll take all that out.
So, overall, eight hundred K comes out of, of revenue and expense, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, otherwise, it's pretty much kind of what it's been. Yeah.
Do you, so uh, so Kim, all in, your county asked this year is what? Let's just get to the.
You know what, I haven't even done the math on it. You know what, I, I.
I'm general basic, it's thirteen.
This, I had it in my scratch notes, I just, I had Jake print this stuff out.
Jake, do you know what that number is?
Well, what the.
Not off the top of my head.
Hundred and.
Is it just the difference between your revenue and expense, Kim?
Yep, so.
Do you wanna leave it, I mean, leave everything as is now, cause you'll do an even out on both sides for the adjustment for the grant thing?
Adjustment, it'll just, it'll just, what, yeah, so it'll be in a little over a hundred, hundred and.
I feel like it was just a hundred and twenty or something when you turned it in, but.
Hundred and twentyish.
I can, give me a second here.
No, no, I got it, I got it, Jake.
Okay.
Perfect, that's what I need, thank you, and that's what it's been for the last two years?
It, it's, it's gone down the last, it's gone down the last couple of years.
So we started like at three forty-three. Why is that ever sticking in my head, I don't know why, but.
Yeah, but we've, we've been, you know, when you guys ask us to shave, we shave.
Yep.
And that one year, we, we did ten, you know, you asked for ten employees for the, for the county, and they came from the health department.
Yep.
And they were, we searched for every, um, everything that was not paying for itself. And short of me and our financial person now, we're, we're pretty much. Yeah, and, and the other thing that we've done differently.
Yeah.
Is that we used to be a little more ambivalent about, about capturing our um. The, the appropriate percentage for administrative overhead.
Yeah.
And we've gotten pretty rabid about that now.
Thank you, Kim.
It used to, well, it kinda counts against us in, in um competitive years. Because, because of the way that things are structured between.
Sure.
A governmental organization and a, and a um private nonprofit. And how all that works, because they automatically get full points, so.
Yeah.
That just means we have to do better on all of the other parts of the grant. Because we're not gonna get that automatic full points.
So, so just so, I mean, Steve, Keisha, you know, Steve, you've been. On this a couple of go rounds now.
Four.
I mean, from the first, when we first started doing this, I can't remember when. You and I really started working on budget material. Cause the first couple of years, it was just basically a fight over whether we should have public health or not.
Yeah.
Anyway, it wasn't even about budget.
Yeah, is everybody convinced we need public health now?
What's that?
Yes, we need public health, Kim, I agree.
Yes, yes.
There is no question.
Can we put that one to bed?
But, but you have, you have done what I asked you to do, you got this down to where all of your pro- if we're gonna build a, a public health department. That can be regional, and that was the intent from prior boards before I got on the board, was to build a regional, it's similar to the jail idea. If we build a bigger jail, we'll be able to house prisoners from other, from other counties and jurisdictions, and not exactly one for one. But it's kind of that con- that same concept, but you put this down to where. Everything is running off of either your, your grants, your state funding, your federal funding. And that's it.
Well, we still get, I mean, we still depend on county for funds too, I mean.
Well, I know, a hundred and twenty thousand, I know. Why not, well, you got, well, paid?
Pretty pleased.
But, but in terms of, in terms of getting a budget down to where it needs to be precise. To have more precision in that budget, you've done an outstanding job getting it, that's really all I'm trying to say. You took on senior nutrition when I asked you to do that, and why, and we'll talk, is that part of this?
That's part of this, yeah. I mean, it's not part of this budget, but we've got another, we've got another.
Yeah, you know, you know me and all these people, I just like. There's probably nothing else we can do.
There's more that we can do.
No, no.
Oh, you mean from this budget?
In terms of the county ass.
Don't know, no, I don't, I think we're.
There's, there's nothing else that we, there's no more, there's no more trimming.
You can't trim it anymore, right?
So that's good, so now it's a question of service, it's a question of where we're at in terms of taking care of our residents. Especially with these other contracts that we use, when we take on other county responsibilities. So talk to us a little bit about just your philosophy about managing those contracts.
About the, the contracts for, for service?
Yes.
Okay, well, one of the, one of the things that, that, we've got a couple of different kinds of contracts. We've got the, the regional contracts, and then we've got the contracts that are just specific to Marion County. And um, the regional contracts, what our, what, what our goal is, and what we're, we're hoping to move to. Is that, but I'll just pick on WIC, um, but what, what we're hoping to do is to, as that expands. Further out, we wanna. we wanna try to build those those outlying public healths by having them take care of their own people so that we don't have to travel so much and we'll take care of the administration. So that's why the subcontract line item in here, in the in the one when I thought it was gonna be bigger, is so it's bigger because we, our goal would be to subcontract with those counties. For them to provide the services to their own people. And then we, I mean, we would have to still do some travel, but but not like what we have had to do in the past.
Because of, because there's been a misconception over the years of public health being we actually go out and do stuff. And we have in the past.
And we do, yeah, I mean.
But you are refashioning public health to a certain degree in the areas that we can't. So that we are contract administrators.
Right.
And in the counties that we provo- that we help, because we're actually, what we're doing is assisting them, I mean, we assist in mental health, we're assisting in public health, we're assisting in a lot of areas with multiple counties, we're actually putting the the actual customer service piece on down.
That's that's our goal, is to do that.
Okay.
We have had, you know, and and years ago, when I first started twenty years ago, that's kind of how it was, except that they were just taking a check from Marion County.
Right.
And not actually doing the services that that were required. So we retrained everybody and they still didn't do it and then we, and that's when it all had to come back to Marion County because we're responsible.
Right.
So so now we're we're having conversations with them about, okay, we're, you know, we want, we wanna be able to to push some of this out. But we're gonna need some help from, frankly, from you guys to influence those boards of supervisors in those other counties that their their public health can do more.
And see, I'm glad you brought that up because this gets me to my next point. Since we are really taking on or refashioning into more administrative agency, I'll I'll say it that way. But we're taking on contract compliance responsibility, um really the management expertise in contract performance and ensuring that the requirements of that contract, they're met, funds are distributed appropriately and accounted for appropriately. Do we get compensa- when we get compensation for this?
That's part of that administrative overhead piece.
So that's the administrative overhead fee, but do we, in addition to trying to influence adjacent boards of supervisors, should we be getting paid from these counties?
Kind of never happened. I would be very surprised.
Or does the administrative fee cover that overhead?
I I think it would.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking like mental health here.
Oh.
We we subsidize the mental health region for about forty percent of all funds.
Right.
And if we weren't in the re- the mental health region wouldn't be able to function. So we're providing a very similar service on the public health side. If the administrative overhead fee covers the cost, fine.
Yeah.
But if there's something else from a legislative standpoint where some of these counties should be chipping in covering our cost, we should at least broach the topic.
Yeah, I think as this this collaborative service area concept unfolds with the state and um to see how how this is going to grow, I think we need to make sure that 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 we're thinking about that and paying attention to that as we as as we do that. One of the, one of the other things that that I put my pinky into this year um with in regard to that was it doesn't always have to be Marion County that that administers a grant project. And so um Decatur County Public Health has the tobacco grant, if they had a, they have a multi-county tobacco grant. And so I called, I called Holly and I said, hey, why don't you write for the for the collaborative service area and and write Marion County into it because I want, we wanna follow your lead on this and see what see what develops. So we will, and and she said that she wrote us in, she asked me for some information, um so I sent her what she asked for. So we'll see what, we'll see what happens with that.
Yeah.
And I thought, you know, there's, that's that's a good grant to to try that with.
Sure.
Um it doesn't put us at tremendous risk for for our infrastructure or anything, it's a good one to to kind of experiment. Decatur County has been a county that we have struggled with in the past. Um to the point where our board chairs, our board of health chairs had had to meet with with um both directors one day. Um because there was, there just was some um, there there was just misunderstanding about expectations of of subcontracting. So this allows her to subcontract with me and so that we can show her that, yes, you can do this, um you can manage that that particular grant. But she already had questions about, you know, there's there's always match required and all of that and she didn't didn't understand how how she was gonna capture match and stuff like that, so so it's kind of a teaching thing too.
Right.
So I spent some time teaching her about how how to make each county responsible for their own match.
Hmm.
And the county doesn't have, her county, just like our county, doesn't have to be responsible for everybody's match. So it it's not all one-way thing.
Right.
But um I think that that we may need to try to help some of those boards move in a direction where they understand that. Um because if there's something that, I mean, we're not a certified home care uh or a home care agency, Wayne County is. There are times, you know, things have changed since we decertified that it might be a good thing for us to have a have a the ability to serve people in home care in some way. But we're not, I mean, I'm not interested at all in becoming Medicare-certified again because the overhead expenses are so much, but they already are. They could subcontract with us for those services and we would be able to provide some of those services and better serve Marion County. So it's a, there's there's all this possibility out there.
Right.
Um so as we as we move towards this philosophy, and I think I've talked to you a a time or two about about, I want you to really think about what you want public health to look like because as I'm I I'm starting to think about retiring, my my plan is that I will be here for for four years. And but at four years, I wanna I wanna have it where where you want it to be when I leave.
Okay.
So.
Where she wants it to be.
Yeah, that's, well, where where I I.
See, all you guys, you're all leaving me. We just had this right before, I mean, come on, you know.
But you're.
Jake, you can't leave me yet, buddy.
So so I think part of part of the the budget planning and part of the philosophy thing is also some succession planning and and kind of how how you want the health and human services stuff to fold together so that we can get ourselves there, which um uh the other the other piece that that I've been talking with is I've been talking uh with Rachel Cecil about mental health and, you know, that um mental health, the Marion County piece of mental health was was part of um part of public health, it broke back off. And so we're we're talking about what can this look like going forward and how can we build an actual structure that benefits the mental health service area and and uses the the expertise of both and brings them together to make an actual system that works.
Right, so look, I, Kim, I think that's great thinking, that's that's exactly what we need to have.
That's why we have great leaders.
That's right, as we move forward and plan for the next, not just four years, but eight. And part of that would be, if if we could have discussions as a board, uh as director of public health, what do you see are those macro trends coming down the line on public health? What are those areas legislatively that we could leverage our lobbyists? Maybe not this session, but next session, to think about changes to public health law, mental health law, so that there can be better utilization
Right.
of money uh and systems, what reforms need to be, and when I say reforms, that could actually be going back to systems and structures that worked twenty years ago, that should have never been changed in the first place.
Maybe even forty.
Yes, so but I think that's, I think that discussion, what you're talking about is something that we should proactively do with uh Kelly and probably our representatives as well. And you and I have talked about this over the years, we've had various meetings.
Yeah.
We've had almost no success from a legislative standpoint, maybe a few a few small wins. Mental health, no wins at all.
Yeah.
Um but I think it's time to really get down to some brass tacks with some of these folks and help them craft legislation. Because that's what's gonna drive, what you're talking about is legislatively driven. Because so much of what you do is driven by what funding we get
Right.
through those sources. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, and then, and something else that's kind of shifting at the state level, um and I don't know how it's gonna fall out, but but the the Department of Health and the Department of Human Services has has the same director now. And it's it's, right now, it's interim, I think, I I think they're probably gonna merge health and human services at the state level as far as the um the director's position. So da- um so Kelly Garcia, who is the the director, she seems to be a little more open to listening to new ideas. And so Rachel and I have been talking about that as well and and maybe even trying to bring her along in some of these discussions.
Good.
And she she appears willing to to talk with with people who have different ideas.
Well, we should, if if that if that's something you and Rachel want to do, let us know. Would love to participate in those conversations.
Yeah.
And get Kelly here
Yeah.
to listen, because in crafting legislation, this is always our hang-up. Our hang-up isn't in ideas, our hang-up is getting it into a legislator's hands. And I have learned now, if you don't write it for them, they can't do it. Which is sad.
Yeah.
I shouldn't have to write the legislation, but we almost have to, at least at a minimum, sketch it out and hand it to somebody, say, can you make this into some, a bill they can produce, because they just don't do it.
Right.
And we need to be able to produce that for folks.
Yeah.
I don't know how many times I've talked with legislators, well, can you write that into a bill for me? I don't have time to write a bill for you, that's what your job is.
Yeah, well, well, that's a thing, they they should like use the Legislative Services Bureau, that's what they're for.
There you go.
You know, and and I, you know, Rachel and I have talked about this before, that that there are things that we could do and that that, but we frankly just haven't had time to actually do it because because we're doing what we're actually hired to do.
Alright, so let's put that on our radar screen, I think that that's great, have those conversations. So uh Steve, Keisha, what what items do you wanna go through and give us budget? I kinda know this, not by heart, but being on the public health, I know it fairly well.
So Kim?
Mm-hmm.
Let's talk about what you're you're asking, looks like, is it a four percent?
Um, yeah.
Or just a bucket type thing?
Um, no, we put in four, okay, we did put do four percent.
Okay.
So um if you prefer three, then that's.
Well, it goes back to, you know, what Mark has has, we, you have done what we've asked you to and exceedingly and above and beyond. And I even look at what you're doing in uh social services and what you're asking there. I just looked forward a little bit and what you cut that budget. Um again, it is.
And that social services, if if we can talk about the general assistance budget a little bit, I I wanna make sure that people understand that that's, that that decrease in that budget is not because we're not serving people.
No, I know, yeah.
People, people could get that from looking at the budget, then they could just.
Yep, nope, and that's not what we're doing, yeah.
We know they're doing things.
But what they're what they're doing is they're linking people into longer-term solutions and other solutions than than the county budget just.
And that's what we asked you to do, yeah.
And so they're they're referring them out to other other organizations and um giving them, you know, some like the medications and that kind of stuff. Those those kind of costs, we we do uh presumptive eligibility for Medicaid, we do, I mean, we do all those kinds of things that that help them longer term that that also don't come out of this budget.
Well, I know that we talked, um the recorder had the question and I said, you know, we hadn't spoke with HR yet as a department head, but there's some things that, you know, looking at salaries and where we're at and um retention. What is clerical, what is admin, what is, um, you know, and I know that Lisa had visited that a little bit, um. Where do you feel your employees are at?
I I don't feel like they are where, we we use the the um, we use Iowa workforce development data and we're, we try to stay between the twenty-fifth and seventy-fifth percentile of of Iowa W IWD uh data for like positions. Um we usually, no matter how hard we try to to get moved ahead, we usually hang right around the twenty-fifth percentile. We don't get them to, just just because of, you know, like, some of them have been here for a long time and and we stay within our bucket and so it take, they just don't get caught up. And sometimes they fall under and then I try to make a correction somehow, but I have to take it from somewhere else in order to do that. If we were to, you know, if you look at the entire scope of the county, um like, I'm gonna.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Your assistant, um her her assistant that was just posted at forty thousand, I've got people that have worked for fourteen years with degrees and knows knows public health inside and out and and could actually, like, if I'm, you know, like, when Lindsay left, um the person I'm thinking of, she's she's training the, she's training the new fiscal
Yep.
uh person, so she just, I mean, she knows the basics of of everything.
And she filled in while Lindsay was gone and how, and Lindsay's been gone a couple months.
Yeah, and and she's not making forty thousand. So we need to, we need to really, I I would feel better if we looked at that somehow to shore that up.
I would like you to look at that and then get with, maybe with Lisa and then, yeah.
But I would like to look at, I would like to look at that in a systemic way if we can, so that it's not just Marion County Public Health, you know, changing what we're doing, I mean, so that so that when they, because employees compare between departments, see whether they, you know.
You do, you're right.
They, and so if there if there was a way to to create a structure for the county, and maybe this is too big of an ask, I don't know. If there was a way to create a structure in the county where if this, then that kind of a thing. Um maybe it's a tiered system, I don't know, but.
Com- common job functions
Mm-hmm.
need similar pay schedules.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter whether they're public health or the treasurer or doesn't.
Right, I would, I would really appreciate that, I don't know whether everybody would, but I should.
How do we get to that point?
Well, well, yeah, we we had, we had thought about doing salary surveys, okay? And we had talked about doing that and then this little thing called COVID got in the way. So I I deep-sixed that for now, but we can certainly take that topic up again and see about that.
Okay, that'd be the long-term solution, but what do we?
And and.
Well, that 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 really is, unless we're well, because this is the thing you have to think about. If we go through and standardize job descriptions, especially for those administrative jobs, that we can do that, there are some that are so unique, you can't standardize them. Now, you could base them on, so like if I've got a finance person uh X that has this degree with these skills with this amount of experience, does that compare with a lawyer too that has this degree, these years of? Yeah, you can do that and companies do that all the time. The law departments aren't unique and distinct from the finance areas, there's comparatives done between those areas. So we can do that across functions, we can do that across jobs, we do that at pretty much everywhere.
Could we do though, just like a clerical admin, I mean, at a smaller scale? I mean, is that what you're looking more at, Kim? Like, and then? Because we all, we do have so many different facets of positions.
Yeah, and it, the the thing is, our our clerical out there very rarely is just clerical, they also run programs and stuff like that. So it's, I mean, so it might not be apples and apples, it might be apples and oranges, I don't know.
But if you had an, I mean, if you kind of knew, you know, this fits within, if the HR knew, okay, this is the the job classification. But if you had an, I mean, if you kind of knew, you know, this fits within, if the HR knew, okay, this is the, the job classification, then she could say, okay, this is the range, you know, versus.
And for, for our department, in, in Department twenty-three anyway, the, um, the, the thing that, that is probably unique from, from other departments is because we build grants, we can buy less stuff and invest in our people more.
Right.
And so it's, it's shifting dollars, um, just from, from stuff to people, which shouldn't be that, that hard of a thing. So it doesn't really, it shouldn't really impact too terribly much what the, the counties give for the department is.
So let's think of, maybe, maybe we can fire up that salary discussion again.
I have, I've been working on some numbers already.
Yeah, we buy less stuff and we invest more in our people.
And I can't argue that, that, you are totally right on your, your example, completely right on your example.
Yeah, but, you know, but I also, I, I think it's good to have, you know, I mean, we have kind of a system with, with the Iowa workforce development thing.
You're not having to have a system.
But it doesn't all, it doesn't always hit. All right, so, um, general assistance, we, we, can I move on to that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, um, like I said, I, you know, just because it doesn't, we're not spending as much, doesn't mean we're not doing as much for people. The, um, the other thing is, the staff that, that is managing that for me has, has asked that I talk to you about potentially bringing a, a couple of policy issues back to you to, to review and, I don't know, wanna, Keisha, would you mind working with us on, on that to, to monkey with that and, and bring something back to the board?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll get that, we'll get that underway. And that's just to kind of clean up, especially, um, especially things around county-funded burials. Those are, that seems to be the, the issue, that's the, the most difficult.
Okay.
So we'll get, that'll, that'll help us on that. Okay, senior nutrition. Again, that's, that's the program that was reworked. I can, I can tell you, we are absolutely serving the most needy people in, in Marion County at this point. As far as I know, Knoxville Senior Center is still delivering the services to the city of Knoxville. We have not been, we have not been doing that, so it's, nothing's changed there.
Okay.
So this is just for the rest of the, for the rest of the county. We continue to contract with COC to deliver the meals and.
And that's working?
And that's working great. Seems to be, we're, we're still contracting with, with Hy-Vee, um, for the meals. And those, you know, there's, there's good days and not so good days with that. But, but there are more, there are definitely more good days than not good days. And when, and when there's not a good day, the staff brings a meal to me and says, you need to look at this. And then I, and then I get with Hy-Vee and.
You're like, yeah, this isn't gonna be acceptable.
Yep, they clear things up pretty quickly, so, so that seems to be working.
Okay.
Pretty well.
That doesn't work at my house. It doesn't either.
She says fix her own.
That's what happened to my house.
There's peanut butter and jelly, that's what my mom would say.
Make a peanut butter sandwich. Environmental health, that budget is, again, just kind of the, the same as, and there, there was nothing big change there.
Yeah, what did we put in there for salary increases?
Three percent. And this one, there was, there was kind of a, um, let's see, the, there was something with the salaries on this one. It was that somebody's salary got put into another line or something and, and it just hasn't been corrected in here. And that's why the percentages.
That's why, that's why. That's why it's a law, okay.
Yeah, the percentage looks kind of wacky because, because some of Bridget's time during this year ended up in, the, the, uh, other line item.
Correct, got it.
But otherwise, we didn't, we didn't put any, any major changes in to the budget or anything. We did not put in anything for, um, you know, like when we're, we're cleaning up properties and stuff, we're still planning on coming to you for, for your line item, for, for property cleanup stuff. Well, we would talk to you ahead of time for those. That's all I got. She's got something.
Steve, Keisha, any additional questions for Kim?
No, I don't.
Senior nutrition, Kim, we were, how much did we reduce that by?
It was.
From where we were to.
Six, was it?
And when we say reduce, I just mean in terms of dollars.
Four or something?
We're providing better service now.
Yeah, it, it was, um, the budget twenty, at the beginning of twenty twenty was, um, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand. And the budget planned for this year is a hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
See, that's excellent.
And, and the, the difference is we're paying for, we're.
Paying for services that need.
Service, as opposed to paying for, for infrastructure type costs.
I know change is hard, but that is so much more of an effective and efficient system now with the proper use of tax dollars. So excellent. We need more programs like that, that run like that, where we align the dollars with the actual service. And if, if the need goes down, the dollars go down. If the need goes up, the dollars go up. I, I don't know why we can't make this model some, I mean, we should talk to the state about this, right?
There, there would be a, a big tax benefit to doing that.
You better would.
There's some, yeah, there's, there are some groups that we would have to convince.
We'll leave it at that, yeah.
Leave it at that, yeah.
That would become non-existent.
Yeah. That kind of thing, yeah.
So do we want it? Yes, yeah, excellent work, Kim, you've gone above and beyond. Yeah, I, yeah, if you can, if you can have a mini-me ready to, you know, step in when you retire, that would be wonderful.
Well, I know that four years is a long time to talk about it, but.
It's not.
But, but I think that it's going to take that.
How long have you been with the county?
Uh, twenty-one, I think it's twenty-one years in April. It'll be twenty-one in April, twenty-two.
I'm going on twenty-one, I think it'll be twenty-two.
I think it'll be twenty-two in April.
Wow. And we've been doing this for eight?
Yeah, you'll be twenty-two in April.
Yeah, and it goes fast, I mean, it, it really does, so, so, yeah. Figuring out, figuring out who's gonna sit in my chair when I leave. I, I would like to know that, actually, I would like to have a good idea of that at least a year ahead.
I think, I, I think what I'd like to do is, um, think about how that would work. Who we could, I mean, do we have to do a search? Do we have to?
I have thoughts.
Do you have thoughts?
I have thoughts already of, of how, you know, and, and it would not, what I'm thinking would not require a search.
Okay.
It's not a, it's, uh, yeah, it would not require a search. We wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to look too far.
Excellent.
But there, but some things would have to fall into place.
Sure.
And, you know, that, but that might be, that might be a conversation with a board, a board member who, um, understands both worlds that I'm thinking of. So that'd be, you're, you, you're living in it. So.
All right.
So then we can.
So that's it, is that it? That you're retiring and taking over that, is that what it is? Oh, wait, just kidding. I got the look. Sorry, Mark.
Yeah, I know, that's probably not it.
Not so much.
And I think, I, I think as, as, as we talk about, um, about the, the whole structure of the public health system and the mental health system and that, there's, there are efficiencies to be gained and there's, there's some, some pretty darn good talent that, that might be able to, to be.
Yeah, I think you're right. All right, very good, any other questions?
I don't.
All right, Kim, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do. Sure appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very good. Who is next?
We're done for today.
We're done.
We're done? All right, well, are there?
Mick Bosh should adjourn.
Steve?
Second.
Jake?
What, wow.
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
Thanks, guys.
We're adjourned.
Thank you, see you tomorrow at noon.
Jake?
Yeah, be safe tomorrow.
Yep.
Yes, be careful. Weather's supposed to be like.